Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Longmont City Council Open Forum Meeting, July 29, 2025. I would like a roll call, please.
Mayor Peck?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ildago-Faring?
Here.
Member Crist?
Present.
Councilmember Popkin?
Present.
Councilmember McCoy?
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Mayor Peck, we have a quorum present.
Thank you. Before we say the pledge, I would just like to remind people that you can watch this meeting on the city's YouTube channel, also at longmontpublicmedia.org/watch, or Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to augment this meeting to bring it into a special session, which all of the councilors agreed to, in order to make a motion. The motion, hopefully all of you or some of you read the council comm in the packet, so I'm just going to go into the motion as soon as I get rid of the screen. There you go. I move to table the Distel Toll Land Exchange due to an ongoing legal negotiations with Wholesomes Property Interests. When the negotiations are settled, council will bring it back on a future agenda. So I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Crist. We'll open it up for a very short discussion, but I need to caution council that anything you say cannot be part of our executive session on this subject. Seeing no one in the queue, let's vote. There we go. It was Councilor Crist, yeah. Who are we waiting for?
It should be open.
Has everyone voted? Let's do verbal vote then. All those in favor? Oh, it came up.
It came up, okay.
I thought it was broken for a minute, and that passed unanimously. Thank you. We'll now go into our regular open forum meeting. I have one sign-up sheet. I'm assuming there will be another. And everyone has five minutes. I will call you as the way you signed up on the sheet. You may sit in the chairs. I think I'll call four at a time, so you can come up, sit in these chairs. And if you would like a certain counselor to answer your question or comment, please let us know beforehand. So the first people on the list are Diana Chavez, Anne Hansen, Phil Hansen, and Kyle Hansen. You may please come up, and the first one to speak should be Diana.
Oh, that's my time already. Oh, sorry. I have two. I was going to submit copies for the council, but I had all kinds of technology issues today, so I have one copy. Should I just give it to her?
Yes, and we can make copies.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't print it at home or at work today. Good times. Good evening, Mayor, council, and fellow citizens. My name is Diana Chavez. I live on Princess Drive in Longmont. I have been here before the council a number of times to speak and inquire regarding the AMI smart meters. I have sent emails to council members regarding the smart meters, with the exception of the most recent council members. I never received a reply from any council member, no answer to any question. I have sent letters to Darrell Hahn with questions regarding the smart meters and received no answer from him either. It seems to me that things have become a little bit out of balance here. My sense is that the mayor and council, for the most part, have taken their title and perceived authority to an extreme, forgetting that the Constitution, that is to govern our nation, state, and community, is of the people, by the people, and for the people, which causes me to question whether you take seriously your oath of office and if you consider your position as one of authority or service. I have recently been doing a book study, which is also a Bible study, and the title of the book is Celebration of Discipline by Richard Foster. Most recently, we have looked at submission, a difficult topic for sure. Quoting from the chapter on submission, "The limits of discipline of submission are the points at which it becomes destructive." Romans 13 is a well-known biblical teaching on the submission to the government. In verse 1, Paul says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities." However, when he, the Apostle Paul, saw that the state was failing to fulfill its God-ordained function of providing justice for all, he called it to account and insisted that the wrong be righted," and that's found in Acts, Chapter 16. Again quoting from the book, "Were these men in opposition to their own principle of self-denial and submission? No. They simply understood that submission reaches the end of its tether when it becomes destructive." End quote. I don't like coming here to address you all. However, it is my belief that you have reached the end of the tether, and what you are doing has become destructive. So I'm here to speak out yet again, for myself, for my family, for my children, for my grandchildren, and for my community. I have questions that I would like to ask you in your position of service to the community. The people of Longmont deserve answers to these and other questions. Myself and others have heard from and know homeowners whose homeowners' insurance policies have been canceled due to the fire danger posed by the smart meters, which I have come to understand do not have a UL listing for safety and are not grounded. Several of us have called our insurance companies to inquire about this. There have been only two responses to our inquiries. Either the company is completely unaware of smart meters and we are told our policy is intact, or the other response is that the smart meter has essentially voided the fire insurance portion of the policy. What is your plan to extend the city fire insurance policy to include the properties where insurance has been canceled?
Is there someone on council that would like to answer this? What is our answer to extending your fire insurance policy to cover the smart meters? Is that what you're asking?
To cover homeowners who experience a fire at their property caused by a smart meter.
From my perspective, that is probably a... We have not addressed that. Council has not addressed that, to be honest.
Okay.
But from my experience, just with other issues with fire insurance being canceled, the state is where that would land, with state law on our insurance. The city has not addressed that, to my knowledge. How about with any other counselor? Counselor Popkin?
Thank you for coming before us. I don't think we've met before. I just wanted to address one, clarify one piece, one piece of information that you shared, which was that the smart meters are not UL-listed. According to our utility staff, all of the new electric meters, both AMI and the non-AMI ones, are UL-listed and comply with all of the codes. So I just wanted to clarify that for the public and for yourself.
Okay.
And, excuse me, and to that extent, thank you, Matthew, for clarifying that. We have not experienced, to my knowledge, any fires in our city due to the AMI meters.
Okay. It's my understanding that there's been one in Boulder, and we verified that with the electrician who worked on the property. And it's also my understanding regarding the UL listings that in the early part of the rollout, the meters were not UL-listed. It sounds like the most current ones are, but the ones that were in the early part of the rollout are not UL-listed, and none of them are grounded.
And that, according to an email that we received this afternoon from our LPC, they are UL. And they're all grounded. I'm just scrolling through the email on my cellphone. I wasn't ignoring you.
Okay, no, I am.
Yep, and I'll just read this to you, as everyone else has been telling me up here without their microphones, huh? Is that in an email today that we did get from our LPC department, "As of 2023, 91% of all electric meters in the U.S. were smart meters capable of remote communication, similar to our AMI meters, and all of the new Landis-Gear electric meters, both AMI and Opt-Out, are UL-listed and comply with all applicable safety and electric codes and requirements," and grounded.
Okay. Well, that's...
And we don't, we haven't had any fires in Longmont.
Okay. Well, there's plenty of evidence of fires in other places, and like I said, there's one in Boulder, so it's obviously a concern, and all the research that I've done indicates that the smart meters are not grounded. So, anyway.
Is there, you said you had another question?
I did have a few more. I have...
One more. You've had your five minutes, but...
Okay. So I guess, I guess you kind of addressed this, that does the city of Longmont consider the installation of a meter that is not up to applicable safety and electrical codes, that you constitute that as proper and necessary?
I don't, yeah.
But you're saying that they are...
They are all up to codes, yes.
Yeah, and who vetted the smart meters to, like, how can we know that for sure?
There is, I'm thinking it would be LPC, the Longmont...
Okay. Well, I find it curious that if all this is true, that we've received no answers to any of our questions, so that...
You know, we've answered those questions at several council meetings.
Okay.
Because it's been brought up many times over the last couple of years, so we have answered them.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the standards that were, that were, and requirements are from the American National Standard Institute and National Electric Safety Code.
And that's on the website?
And that's on the website?
Yes. Anne Hansen?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm here to talk about the open space and the land swap, the compost, with a possible compost facility. So we farm, and our farm, part of it...
Okay, thank you. Just put that almost right on your mouth.
Why is it...
Okay. There you go.
It's still red, but, okay.
It should be red.
All right. So my grandparents bought our farm in 1944. It borders 20 and 1/2, and we are somewhat catty-cornered to where the Distel property is. And in fact, I knew Mrs. Distel. She was a very hard-working woman. I sold eggs to her. Starting in seventh grade, I raised chickens, and she loved buying fresh homemade eggs because she didn't want to raise her own chickens anymore. So once a week, I would go down and visit with her and sell her eggs. She would be horrified to know that this would be anything less than farmland, as I am as well. I was very happy when this land originally was to be slated as open space. I would really hope and wish and pray that it would continue to be that way. We would be impacted. We spend most of our days outside working. I have heard that it won't smell, however, near compost facilities I've been at, and that ones that I, my friends, are aware of and have been at, they do smell quite bad. I've heard that within a six-mile radius, people, they do have complaints from them. So that would include some eastern side of Longmont. One other thing, interesting, when I was in the St. Rain Valley School District, because this is the farm I grew up on, the one that I still live on, and our, we used to, the St. Rain Valley School District had far more field trips than they do now. One of the field trips we took was to the St. Rain River behind Distel's property. And I remember they taught us about wildlife, about the St. Rain River, history in the area. They also taught us vegetation and wildlife of the area. And it was a wonderful day. In fact, this day, I remember it, and I was in elementary school at that time. And of course, we cannot go back, but it's so close. And if that, if that property someday was reclaimed into open space, it certainly would be wonderful to be able to take kids in the St. Rain Valley School District out for a very affordable field trip. It may sound like a pipe dream, but it is just a consideration, is that this land can be used as educational purposes, as well as open space. And a few other things. We are concerned with traffic, of course. Traffic out there is already, it's already questionable. And, let's see, I am concerned about the high-water table. I'm concerned about the flooding because I know that I've seen floods out there, and I would not want to see the compost go into, into the river. And a couple other things. In 2021, Boulder County Commissioner Matt Jones, over the compost facility that they were pushing to put in at that time at Rainbow Nursery, Matt Jones said that the compost facility should not be built on open space. I agree with him, and I would hope that you would agree with him as well. Yeah, also, my concern, especially as a farmer and not wanting to put on my land compost that would have any type of PFAS or PTFE, and as I understand it, the ASP technology that will be used, that is used in California, that would potentially be used for these composts, this compost system, that they can leach into the compost, and I certainly would never put that on our farmland. So those are considerations I would hope you would consider. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll take into consideration what you've said, but we have to wait until all these negotiations are over.
I understand that.
So it is tabled.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Phil Hanson. Anne is my wife. We farm right next to the Distel property. I would never use the compost, not because it's compost or I have anything against compost, but it's not feasible. It will not compare in price. I do, I have one neighbor that uses compost, and I've talked to him about it several times. He said it's not feasible. The only reason he uses it is because it's so heavily subsidized by his county landlord, and they want him to use it. But he said it doesn't make sense financially compared to everything else that you can use. The other thing that really bothers me is if you have compost down there and you have a big flood, you've got a catastrophe on your hands. That's going to be a big black eye on Longmont if you let something like that happen. I mean, this makes absolutely no sense in my mind, and I hope that you'll reconsider and not put a compost facility down by the river. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kyle?
Yes, my name is Kyle Hanson. As you've heard, both my mother and father have just spoke, but I'm also here in regards to the compost facility that is a potential for the Distel property, and it is very unsettling and very stressful and unnerving for me. I mean, for one, if you look at Sandstone Ranch or all the apartments up by the Walmart over there, those are all, are all of the farmers that live in that area. We're all going to be impacted by it. We are all going to smell and have to deal with the compost facility daily if it goes in, and it's going to be a huge drain on mental health, which is never a good thing. And it's also going to greatly depreciate anybody wanting to use Sandstone Ranch, which I think is very sad. But I, I just think it's really important to consider everybody who you are impacting and all the negatives that come with this potential compost facility. If we're going to put in a compost facility, I'm not against compost. I think compost is great. It's a great way to use food waste. But if we're going to do something like that, we should really think about where we're placing it. We should put it maybe near a landfill that already has been set up to the point where it's not going to be inhibiting more people or impacting more people because of a new facility. And it also isn't going to be taking up priceless open-space land that we are losing more and more every day, because every day we have more and more development going in. And I've, throughout my life, I've seen more and more farmland be taken away from us near our property, near the property that I hope to take over and farm eventually as well. And we're slowly losing our agriculture and our open space, and I think this would be a great disservice to all of that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kyle. The next four are Sheri Rasmussen, Doe Kelly, Karen Kroll, and Mary Lynn.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Peck and council members. I appreciate the time, being able to speak.
Would you tell us your name, please?
Yes, sorry, I'm Sheri Rasmussen. Thank you. I'm a current resident of unincorporated Boulder County. I actually live directly across from the Rainbow Nursery, which is the prior site that the county had sought to put this composting site on about five years ago. I was one of seven families that really challenged the county in, in putting it there due to the open space. They had acquired open space originally, then they bought the land and fee title, and then they ended up wanting to propose the composting site. Anyway, they ended up withdrawing that application, and it didn't move forward, and we were grateful. We farm directly across from it on open-space property. We do have a house on open space as well, so we're very familiar with open space. However, my husband was killed about four years ago to the date in an automobile accident, and I've maintained the farms. We have another farm that is actually just directly south of this proposed site, just a couple of miles. Actually, it borders the Hansons. Our family's been there over 100 years. We've had that farm. It's never been developed. It's 160 acres. We've got Boulder White Rock shares, Leggett shares, and again, we've never developed it. We continue to farm it. It's all roe crop, and we've kept it as is. We actually have another farm just about a mile to the east of this farm, which is southeast of this proposed site. So both farms are directly heavily impacted by this proposed site. That 140 acres has also never been developed, roe crops, and has water rights on that as well. I bring all that up because I just feel like I can't escape this composting nightmare for us. Our family, again, very traditional farmers. We, we mind our own business. Getting up here and speaking in front of you is not something I enjoy, and it's not something our family would ever want to do. But I, I did some research. I've done a lot of research since the first initial meeting that we had with Boulder County on the Rainbow Site, Proposed Site. And I guess my question for you would be, this is going to be a different composting site than what I feel I have read through the A1 composting. The A1 composting site is strictly manure. This site is food. And I have in my hand a large packet that's public information. It's on the Weld County Commissioners' hearings, and it is... And it is, and I just chose one, but I chose the one that most models this type of composting site. And it's, it is Heartland Composting Site. I would challenge you all to dig all that up and read it. The, it's been plagued since 2010, which is its inception, with problem after problem, and sighting after sighting, which most of what has never, it's, most of those sightings have really never been resolved. There's been traffic impact studies that have been done. There's been groundwater issues that are still not resolved, noise, smell, the smell alone. You can, you can read through the docket, but there's, I'm reading straight from the hearing certificate showing testimony during the land use cases. There are over 63 items found in this certificate that were provided to the Weld County Commissioners, and again, many of which were never resolved. Looking through all the testimony and looking through all of the stuff that Weld County has had to endure just answering a lot of these complaints and filings, is the city of Longmont really prepared, both staffing and temperament-wise, to really address a lot of these pending issues or, you know, future issues that would come about? Should we really move down, or should you move down this, this road? These are substantial, and again, these are really good testimonies to hear, because this would be a very similar composting site to what we would be seeing over in our neck of the woods. And again, very different than what the county is proposing with the A1 composting site. And again, I know I'm running out of time, but when the county initially proposed the Rainbow Nursery site, they used a composting site in comparison that was in New York. And during our battle with the county, that composting site was shut down. It's actually not in existence. So, thank you for your time.
Can I ask you where this Heartland composting site is located?
Yes, it's in Weld County and Song County Road 49. I can provide the information, or I can leave this information for you if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, Doe Kelly.
Oh, I'm Doe Kelly. I live on Barbary Drive in Longmont. Most of you know that already, but anyway. Oh, yes, and a sidebar, it is my birthday, and yet, here we are. Happy birthday to me. I asked myself--
Is that your balloon back there?
She brought it.
Yes, it is. I asked myself what I wanted for my birthday. Three things came up. The
first one was, save the bees. We lost 75% of our commercial honeybees, according to CBS News, this past, I don't know, 10 months from right where we are now. The second one was, save the humans, and the third one was, save the planet. Now, we, my friend and I are going to be reading Maria's self-written obituary. But before that, I have something that I wrote that is really personal to me. It's not about Maria, it is about Maria, but it's about me and all those who suffer from electrohypersensitivity. And it's called canaries. We are your canaries, your delicate ones, your early warning system. If we die, you die. That is our purpose, to raise the alarm. And now, the alarm has been raised. The threat level of excess electromagnetic field exposure is greater than ever. It took me two weeks to figure things out at home when the next light wireless internet was introduced to our living room, and I was microwave injured. Two long, torturous weeks, physically, emotionally, and mentally, of not knowing, not knowing where would I go to escape this torture, and how would I survive in this increasingly wireless world of continuous invisible microwave signals and other toxic electromagnetic fields that inform every nanosecond of my and our waking hours. This is a cry for the right to exist in peace, in the comfort, security, and safety of our own dwellings, free of invisible toxic EMF. This is a cry that's not going away, not by a long shot. It's a cry for humanity and for compassionate understanding of a situation that some dismiss as nonsense, or it's all in our head. We canaries and other people of good faith and deep knowledge on this subject of wireless harms and smart meters, we've been telling you, Longmont, for five exceedingly long years, that this wireless rollout would come to no good. Now, your canaries have come home to roost, caught and tangled in the spider's net, this invisible mesh network gulag and prison that is the dream of dictators and other faceless people without conscience who seek to control or cull their herd. We will not be controlled, nor will our voices be silenced. Now I have a trigger warning. The following has been written by Maria and subsequently posted by Maria's friend. It contains discussion of self-inflicted euthanasia. If this topic is particularly sensitive for you, please be forewarned. Title: Maria's Self-Written Obituary. Date: March 2019. Subject: Canary Dies. Name: Maria Sergeant August, aka Ani Tukten Sandru. Born: August 3, 1970, Died: March 12, 2019. On March 12, I chose to end my earthwalk and reunite with the mother of all things. I wanted to free myself from the straitjacket of electrifying pain and neurological debilitation of electrohypersensitivity and Epstein-Barr virus. These hidden, modern-day epidemics humbled me and connected me to the great suffering of others. Yet, they also shattered and dehumanized me. The constant tension of strange symptoms and crushing pain left me cut off from a life of embodied prayer and active altruism. I felt alienated from my true nature and impotent to be of service. I decided the greater good was to give my life with the aspiration to raise awareness, awareness and help others. As Thomas Merton said, "Man has no greater love than he lay down his life for his friend." If anyone asked, you can say I ended my own life, but it would be more accurate to say I died from electromagnetic field or EMF poisoning. I'm not ashamed of my actions. They were based on compassion for my own suffering and the desire to prevent more people from becoming sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Doe. Karen Kroll.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Karen Kroll, and I live on Nelson Road in Longmont. And I'm continuing Maria's obituary on behalf of Doe Kelly, myself, and all humans, insects, and animals harmed by EMFs and smart meters. I'm not the first person with electrohypersensitivity to die by their own hand, but perhaps I'm the first to publicize it. And that's my whole intention. Let me be the poster child for this 21st century plague. Let me be the impetus for positive change. What sends a stronger message than death? The message is, seek the truth and learn how to protect yourselves. The message is, create housing opportunities for people with EHS. Man-made electromagnetic fields, EMFs, at current astronomical levels are unprecedented in human history, and they are not safe. Human cells cannot function properly under this 24/7 radiation shower. That is why people are getting sick. I chose to die so you would know how important it is to reduce your exposure to this invisible toxin. I chose to die so the world would see that safe camps for EMF refugees are desperately needed. EHS, electrohypersensitivity, has all the ingredients of torture. Cause someone intolerable pain, separate them from community, and prevent them from sleeping. Is that a risk you're willing to take? Is that a life you want for your children? It's much, much easier to prevent than to cure. And those like me who get a severe case find there is nowhere to live, detox, and recover. Let us care for this growing population of our society. Now is the time to start developing wilderness-safe havens. Every person deserves a safe place to call home. I do not want a funeral, memorial service, or life celebration. Instead, please help the living by honoring my three final wishes. Thank you, and may you be well. Maria's three wishes. One, take simple steps to lower your EMF exposure and stay healthy. Organize housing for people sick with EHS. Resources for this are the book, The Non-Tinfoil Guide to EMFs, and The Safe Haven Vision for a Permaculture Camp for EMF Refugees, to be found at the Environmental Health Trust website. Two, cleanse your body of radiation, viruses, heavy metals, and pesticides, which cause electrohypersensitivity, and other chronic illnesses, including lupus, Lyme, MS, RA, and cancer. Three, take extra good care of each other. Spend time each week in loving service to a sick, injured, or household person. Let them know they are not forgotten. This is the true purpose of being human. Resources for this are the books, Everybody Always by Goff and Peace Pilgrim. May my death usher in a new era, an era in which EHS and Epstein-Barr virus are taken seriously, diagnosed correctly, treated immediately, and prevented widely. May this be an era of permaculture eco-villages, bountiful food forests, abundant altruism, and safe technologies. I gladly sacrifice my life for that purpose. May it be so. Look for me in the sun, the moon, and the stars. Pray that I've melted into Mother Luminosity, and am helping all beings in all worlds, in all ways. May the Bodhicitta flourish. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Mary Lynn?
Good evening. My name is Mary Lynn, and I live on Atwood Street. So, in speaking with engineers about the city's AMI rollout, it's come to my attention that smart meters are not fused, which is different than grounding, which means that as the electricity comes into your home and passes through the smart meter, if there's a surge that causes that smart meter to heat up and do all of the things that smart meters can do, like melt the battery if there's a battery, cause a fire, cause heating up of the, and damage to the electricity in our home, excuse me, in your home, and to appliances, and so forth, there's nothing to stop that from happening. I'm wondering if the city, the city has in its code that it will use reasonable diligence to provide an adequate and uninterrupted supply of electrical energy at normal voltage, but if the supply shall be interrupted, interrupted or fluctuate in voltage for any cause, the city should not be liable for personal injuries, loss or damage resulting therefrom. No such failure constitute breach of an agreement for electric service. And the city then says the customer is responsible for taking whatever precautions the customer deems appropriate to protect against interruptions of service or fluctuations in voltage. So laws, precautions do not conflict with these regulations and so forth. So my question is, what does the city expect us, to those of us who, in the city, who have these meters that have this fuse problem, to do in an instance where there was a fluctuation that caused a problem with the smart meter? And the reason why I'm asking is because the city is trying to move to an all-renewable grid, which unless we spend an extraordinary amount of money on building a battery infrastructure that, the last I checked, we can't actually afford to the level that the city would like, the fluctuations are part of the picture. So I'm asking the question of, what does the city expect the homeowner to do should this happen? And since this is a problem that is voiding the fire insurance on people's homes, what the city expects the homeowner to do in terms of replacing their fire insurance, should that happen?
Counselor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. In today's modern homes, and even homes that were built 100 years ago, but have now been upgraded to have electricity in them, they all have, most of them have moved away from fusing. They use circuit breakers. Electricians will tell you that. And so, of course, they don't use, have fuses, and then they have--
Excuse me, the smart meter is before the fuse and circuit breaker system. It's not, it's not affected by that. It's prior to that. It's where the energy comes in before it hits the fuse box in the circuit breaker system.
Yeah, it doesn't require that. The fuse box is in the house, so, just saying.
But it's not on the smart meter, so the smart meter can still overheat.
You don't need it on the smart meter when you have that. And we have applied all the legal requirements and all the appropriate requirements on all of our smart meters. And we're not seeing, we're not hearing, I have never once heard anything about fires that are associated specifically like this all over the country. It's not happening here. People aren't losing their insurance due to that. They're losing their insurance for other things, like in the mountains not having a proper abatement for making sure that they've done the proper fire mitigation. But they're not losing their insurance because of smart meters in those situations, nor are we here.
Well, I'm telling you, I've spoke to an engineer who, just recently, who actually builds grids, and he said that this is actually a real problem, and it's because there's no fusing prior to entering the circuit breaker system of the house. And there are concerns, folks are bringing the specifications of the smart meters that are used in this town to their insurance company, and they're saying, no, that violates our policy. So I do believe that this question has not been answered and does need to be answered, so.
That question needs to be answered by the insurance companies. Of course, they're not going to have their policies upgraded immediately to cover anything new. They never do. So it's just like, if, if you have fire insurance on your policy now, until there is a fire that has been addressed because of a smart meter, we don't have anything at this point that says that our insurance companies in the city of Longmont are, are raising the rates or are not insuring people because of fires with smart meters.
So who should I have these folks contact at the city who have now had their insurance questioned? And we're in the process of investigating this with our insurance, and we'll be able to report back on this as well. I've heard from a number of different people, and it is, has, does have to do with this fusing problem and the fact that the smart meters can overheat. And they are hearing this. So where does this go?
The fire chief.
Okay. And so you're saying that the city of Longmont, it does have in its code that you're not responsible. I did read you that section, if there is any issues happening from surges of electricity. And so you're saying the city council doesn't feel that you have any responsibility to look at this further? I just want to be clear.
No, that is not what I said. And thank you for bringing it to us. We will ask our fire chief and get a public statement made about our smart meters, fire insurance, and what, what that looks like today. Thank you. The next four people, Lynda Lee, Terry Moore, Kim Edmondson, and Jeff Lester. Linda Lee, Terry Moore, Kim Edmondson, and Jeff Lester.
Oh, hello. Good evening. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. My name is Linda Lee and I live on Heirloom Way in Longmont. I would like to introduce you to my 85-year-old mother and my two brothers, Josh and Justin. They are the reason I am here tonight. Regardless of your views on smart meters, we personally have been trying to keep them off our home, including the opt-out meter due to health and security issues. My brothers were both diagnosed back in the late 80s with PCAN. It is a neurodegeneration with brain iron accumulation formerly called Hall of Orton Spats Syndrome. It is a genetic degenerative disease of the brain that can lead to Parkinson-type symptoms, dystonia, dementia, and ultimately, death. In the early 1990s, they both underwent a procedure for deep brain stimulation with a stimulator placed in their brains and wiring down to the chest area for their batteries. According to a National Library of Medicine article, it states whether intentional or unintentional sources of electromagnetic interference, EMI, can lead to either malfunctioning or damaged DBS devices, as well as injury to human tissue. Would you be willing to risk your family members with potential harm from these meters if you had a deep brain stimulator? There is a lot of controversy regarding the smart meters, their safety and security. For my family, it is one of safety. I personally believe that there are increased fire risks associated with these meters and I have nightmares wondering how we will get my brothers out of the home should we have a fire. There are plenty of articles out there if you are willing to take the time and research. Norman Lamb, with an E, is actually an insurance examiner and he has a Substack where he talks about this particular area and he has also testified in New Mexico. Most of you are probably not aware that the city sent employees and the Longmont police to our homes on May 29th to service with a notice of disconnect power. And if you were not home, they changed your meter anyway, knowing full well it was not what you wanted. In our case, my mother was home getting ready to take my brother to the emergency room for an infection with 104-degree temperature he was coming down with. And the last thing she needed was them showing up at the door to harass her, intimidate her, and bully her into taking a smart meter. We scheduled a disconnect hearing with the city like we were told. It was supposed to be with an impartial hearing officer. It was not. It felt like he was the strong arm of the law defending the city and their actions. When we got to the hearing room, there were three city employees, the deputy city attorney, and the hearing officer, who is also an attorney in Longmont. So five against one. This hearing felt as though decisions had already been made, regardless of the evidence. It was a formality rather than a true hearing. I am here tonight to ask some questions that others have refused to answer. During those hearings on June 23rd, a lot of people asked questions and the UL approval listings were one of them. Also, as far as the, if they'd been approved and we were told, no. Or actually, maybe Daryl couldn't even answer the question at the time. So are you, as city council, aware that you are possibly violating your own codes by what you have installed on the houses? The National Electric Code because of security reasons seeing as how they can be hacked and spied upon? And OSHA? There are many others to list, but I don't have time. I'd like to know how you plan on rectifying this. Considering the state of Colorado just passed the House Bill 251175, which is a smart meter opt-in rather than opt-out, do you believe in light of this new passed legislation that Longmont could be seen in violation of this new law under the Equal Protection Clause, the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution? What does Longmont gain by forcing these meters on the people? Is it Longmont's intention to reach 100% electrification by 2030? If so, how does that look for the residents that still have gas appliances? Are you going to make them illegal and remove them? Is this because you are trying to join the United Nations resilience hub? And if so, how does that also benefit the city? Why were we recently told? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me ask you a question. Were you offered an opt-out option to not have the AMI installed?
We were, but when I was given the information on the opt-out meter, it also has the same capabilities as the smart meter. It can be turned off and it can be turned on. Who has that control? I don't know. I'm not willing to find out at my brother's expense. So right now, I'm sitting here waiting for you guys to make a decision because when the hearing officer sent out his, saying that we were all denied, he didn't bother putting anything. So I have a feeling on day 29, you guys are going to show up and disconnect our power. Because nobody has said otherwise. What's happening to us? So are you going to show up and disconnect our power when I have two brothers that have brain stimulators and I have a mother that has a CPAT machine and I have a brother that's on a trach and has oxygen for it at night? Are you going to turn off our power?
Diane Christ here. Counselor Christ would like to comment.
Ms. Lee, were you able to ask the, or mention to the hearing officer your medical concerns?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. They basically said, hey, you have smartphones, there's smart TVs, there's all sorts of things in the day, these days that, you know, that shouldn't interfere with it.
Do you? Or do you try to control other EMF modules in your home?
They don't have smartphones in their rooms. So, I mean, they have a smart TV. Had I known some of the stuff that was going on years ago, we probably wouldn't have got them for them. However, their bodies have come accustomed to them. But now with the new battery replacements that they're doing in their bodies, they are all done with a smartphone. Not something I would choose. But that EMF can still possibly hack their deep brain stimulators and I'm guessing probably adjust them or heat them up if that's where they're talking about possible damage to the tissue of their bodies? I don't know. I know that I did include that article with, to the hearing officer for him to view that and he acted as though he hadn't even seen it.
And to answer your question, no, your electricity is not going to be turned off.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
No. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Terry Moore. Hi, Terry.
Hi. It's amazing. I didn't know I had built a name for myself. I talked, I talked to Strings before. Let me visit the subject again. The hearings were a joke and did not resemble due process of law at all. But I talked about that last time that I was here. Where is the money this time? Why was there such a push to get them all installed? Did House Bill 251175 have anything to do with the rush? Was there any money waiting on that? Are you glad you made the push to get them all installed? Are there strings attached? Did you make a deadline of some kind? I asked you to think about the safety of the meters last time. Did you? Or did you just buy whatever someone was selling regardless of the truth? I still know people who are hurt by these meters. One was even the doctor, one was even at the doctor's office late today and wouldn't make, couldn't make it tonight. I was going to give her a ride. People are still hurting. Have you helped them? I don't think so after hearing what I heard about. I went into one person's house and in 10 minutes, that's all I could take. I am a ham. My call sign is K-I-0-R-E. I've never had a problem. And yet, at their house, I felt it. You've got something that's going on and it hasn't been tested for and somebody pencil-whipped it. So what will you do with the strings that you found? Don't have any that you know of? Really? People are hurt. The invoicing devices you approved are hurting people. Are you sure these devices were safe? Are you just listening to somebody else? Do they hurt sensitive people? Will they not burn a house down? I just wanted to let you know. It doesn't take much to heat up a lithium ion battery. And once it catches fire, it makes its own oxygen and burns like crazy. And anything close to it will burn down. Are you, and each of you, sure our neighborhoods are safe? This is not the end. This is the beginning. I know you don't like lawsuits. I'm guessing with the new state law, you might discover a few. I have somebody to show you here. Must have dropped him. This is Lavoy Finicum. He knew the Constitution pretty well. He was a rancher. You may have heard of him. Because this is a Constitution right here. That's him on the back, that's him on the front. He died for the ideas written in this document. Will others in Longmont have to stand up and get cut down or lose their homes or their life for you to do something about it? The California fires, some say, were caused by the meters. I remember seeing a report that this guy had two houses. He was renting the back one and living in the front one. The back one is gone because of the fires and it clearly started at the meter. But he had an old meter on the back one. And surrounded by fire, it didn't catch. Amazing. Does the storm, does the sun warm the batteries too much? Do, are we going to sit and wait until a fire is caused and someone will have to bear the burden of doing a law and, you know, going with the insurance company and figuring out who is responsible for this? Will it come back to these meetings? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Kim Edmondson?
Hello. I'm Kim Edmondson from Bittersweet Lane here in Longmont. And I've been talking to this council for about five years now and Sustainability Advisory Board about the meters and about their potential fire harms, health harms, all kinds of harms, every harm under the sun that has been proven and discussed by leading experts who need more money for proper research. They're not getting, for whatever reason. I can't imagine why. A lot of these things I've talked on, I could talk on as well. I had an interesting run-in with a fellow friend of my daughter's parent who actually installs smart meters for Excel Energy and he had some questions and I had some questions for him. And I asked him about something I saw on a Connecticut for Safe Tech website about the grounding of the home. And I said, in Connecticut, it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure their home's properly grounded. Is that true in Colorado? And he said, yes, it is. And he said, as a matter of fact, my home in Firestone, it's not even 10 years old when we bought it. I checked it and it wasn't even properly grounded. And so I would have thought when they came out with these meters just as a safety wellness thing to do, would check to make sure houses are grounded. I watched them put meters on all my neighbor's house. I watched them put the opt-out meter on my house, which I did not want. But I felt coerced to doing because I had my 87-year-old mother-in-law watching our pets while we're on vacation and she's on oxygen. And I couldn't risk having you coming and either swapping out and putting a toxic meter on her home that could affect her pacemaker or make me sick when I get home without my knowledge. So I got your opt-out meter that I did not want. But I felt coerced like I had to. And so if there's any electricians here listening to this tonight, feel free to call and put out an ad on your websites that you will inspect people's homes to see if they're grounded. Because I doubt mine is because where my meter is and where the foundation is and where the ground is now, there's probably about eight inches of ground. I can't imagine it's still grounded if that is indeed a factor at all in helping avoid a fire. Another thing is during the Marshall Fire Hole thing, one of my husband's good friends came to our house while his house burned. He actually watched his house burn from our living room. And we got to talk to him through the whole process of what's going on with the insurance and the fire insurance and all this. And he said one of the big problems they had was the foundation wasn't covered. And because of that, they could not afford to rebuild and they up relocated their family to Virginia Beach where he was from. They couldn't afford to stay here with all the codes and all that stuff. And so my husband's like, well, I don't want to have happened to us what happened to him. So he changed our policy to have better fire coverage. Well, just this week, he's like, you won't believe this. Our homeowner's insurance has more than doubled, Kim. We haven't had a chance to call him to see why. But it's getting to the point where we can't afford to stay here because you won't drop grocery taxes and because you got to keep your lending ability up and all of that other stuff. It's more important than your people being able to survive in your city. So there's that factor of it. And then there's like other things. I'm looking at other states to move in. I'm like, well, Utah's looking good. They removed the fluoride from their water. Can you guys do that? I mean, it's out there now. It's no neurotoxin. Is that something we can discuss? I saw, I think it was a Sustainability or Water Board meeting where a former council member, Martin, who's no longer here, made a comment and I have it, I wrote it down at home. I can send it to you if you want to re-watch it, about how, well, we can't remove the fluoride from the water because doing so is a guilty admission that we're doing something wrong so we should just keep it in there. My theory is, if you know better, do better. We all now know this. Some states are removing it. Why isn't the city of Longmont? At least, that's the least you can do. It's a neurotoxin. And by the way, I've read studies that say EMF radiation from smartphones, smart meters, what have you, actually open the blood-brain barrier. So here we are getting a mega dose of fluoride with the side of smart meter EMF to, you know, speed it up. So we're all too snowed out to pay attention to what you're all doing or something. I don't know. It just seems kind of crazy and I would hope that maybe that's something you can give us and she won't give us properly, you know, grounded meters that don't have smart tech in them, like a good old classic dialed analog meter. That's what I would like to see. I would like to have you zones. Maybe you should take some of your new apartment and put digital analog on them and advertise them as EMF lowered zones. You know, something. Just an idea I thought I would throw out there. Because I've been at this for a long time and I'm getting tired. We had a great vacation visiting our national parks this summer. I actually felt decent. We got home. My husband felt like total shit when we got back to our house. He's still in denial. It's making him sick. And the thing that's sad is most doctors have no clue what radiation sickness look like. There's probably tons of people here that have issues that have no idea.
Thank you, Kim. Okay. Jeff Lester?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Lester and I reside at 1517 Mayfield Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here this evening to respectfully express my strong opposition to the proposed land exchange involving the Distill Open Space property. In my view, this proposal marks a dangerous turning point, not just for this one parcel, but for the long-term integrity of Longmont's entire open space program. Some within City Hall may argue that Distill is a one-time deal, that future land swaps will be judged on their individual merits. But the public actually perceives Distill quite differently. Approving this exchange would set a lasting precedent, politically and culturally. That land purchased with voter-approved open space funds is negotiable, even expendable, if another city department has a compelling enough need for the land. That would mark a significant shift in expectations. Until now, open space in Longmont has meant permanent protection for wildlife, for the environment, and for residents who deeply value these lands. This proposal would be the first This proposal would be the first time designated open space is repurposed for industrial development. It crosses a line, and once that line is crossed, it becomes far more difficult to defend in the future. This isn't just a slippery slope argument, rather it's about honoring the promise made to voters and preserving public trust. If open space protections can be traded away, then what does permanent protection really mean? On the merits, the proposed swap simply does not provide a net benefit to Longmont's open space program. There is no meaningful ecological or recreational gain that justifies relinquishing the Distill parcel as outlined. Even with the proposed five acre increase, the exchange would fragment the existing continuity of the Distill property and with adjacent open space lands. By any reasonable measure, the result is a weakened, not strengthened, open space configuration. Additionally, the public process around this exchange has at times been murky. Offers from City Hall to the county for the use of the Distill open space were made largely behind closed doors. Many in the community, including myself, were surprised to learn just how far along the process had advanced before there was broader awareness. To be clear, open space advocates like myself support composting and understand the need for better infrastructure, but that shouldn't come at the expense of protected land. Other options exist. Boulder County's Phase II feasibility study being released this September will include further site selection opportunities. So why move forward with the offer of Distill to the county when less damaging alternatives may still emerge? This question brings me to my request this evening. While I support the council's motion to table or postpone the land swap, I believe more is needed. I urge the council to take the next step and to formally request that Boulder County remove the Distill property from further consideration as a compost facility site. In addition, I propose that any future site selection discussions be limited to land already designated for Public Works use, either within the city of Longmont or at sites elsewhere in the county that are brought forward in the county's upcoming Phase II study. Pursuing these alternatives would ensure our protected open space remains preserved. Composting is a worthy and necessary goal, but it belongs on land set aside for infrastructure, not on land set aside for preservation. Open space needs to remain off limits to industrial use, no matter how well-intentioned the purpose. I urge you to uphold the promises made when voters approved open space program and ensure that protected truly means protected. Thank you.
Thank you. The next four are Ruby Bowman, Jamie Simo, Rob Alexander, and Ethan Augreen.
Hi, Rob, how are you?
Hi, my name is Ruby Bowman, 1512 Left Hand Drive. Last month I sat in these chambers and I noticed a prominent display of the city's land acknowledgement concerning stolen Indian land. One sentence in the acknowledgement caught my eye. Quote, "We honor the history and the living and the spiritual connection that the First Peoples have with this land," unquote. The bald eagle is part of that living and spiritual connection to the land for Native people. The bald eagle is one of the most iconic and sacred beings on this earth for Native American culture. I am De Neeh, or Navajo, and in my culture, the eagle is part of our emergence and creation stories and our healing ceremonies. And for many tribes, including Indian nations of the Great Plains, eagles are sacred because they soar high in the sky and carry our prayers to the Creator. I was once told by an elder that we must treat eagles gently because the body of the eagle represents the body of the world and the life, all life on earth. The Confluence Bald Eagle Roost located on Boulder Creek Estates Open Space is one of the most critical winter communal roosts for bald eagles in the Boulder-St. Frank corridor, according to Front Range Nesting Bald Eagle Studies, a local research and advocacy organization. In a 2008 Times Call article, roosts may be largest in northern Colorado, eagle observers described the Confluence Roost as "the whopper" and "historic" and as being the biggest one on the front range because of the high number of eagles roosting at the site. However, over the years, there has been a downward trend in the number of eagles at the roosts. And I fear increased light and noise pollution and other human disturbances generated by a composting facility and a city development complex at Distill or at Toll will further compromise the integrity of the Confluence Roost and eagle habitat along Boulder Creek. A composting facility will also function as a wildlife attractant for bald eagles and other raptors, influencing changes in their foraging behaviors to become scavengers. Contrary to what was reported a few weeks ago, animal parts like bones, chicken, fish, and meat are accepted by Boulder County and Longmont for composting and will attract wildlife, including those moving along Boulder Creek to the compost piles. Longmont and Boulder County have not even conducted a biological assessment to investigate the potential harmful impacts to eagles in the area. At the very least, a comprehensive study should be completed by raptor experts before a decision is made on the Distill disposition or the Toll property. The people of Longmont voted to tax themselves in order to create our open space program and approved two extensions. The city holds these lands in trust for the people. The land swap is a bad deal, not only for the people who voted for the open space tax, but it's a devastating proposal for vulnerable wildlife species, including bald eagles who inhabit Weld County as their home. If the city is serious about honoring the spiritual connection that the First Peoples have with this land, then you have to honor the bald eagle. The long-term well-being and survival of our eagles along Boulder Creek should be a primary concern for this council and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby. I do want to say that I agree, we all know that there were, that was a huge eagle's nest in that area, but many of those disappeared because of the 2013 flood. It wasn't all because of human activity. Some of those trees were knocked down, died, and that is why some, I'm not saying all, but it wasn't just because of human activity that they left.
What will be impacted is the whole corridor, a four-mile corridor on Boulder Creek that contains the eagle roost system. And the middle roost, it's been documented that that roost has collapsed because of nearby development that have impacted that particular roost. And I'm concerned that's going to continue to happen as development, if development happens at Distill or at Toll. And I don't think that's something that the city should move in that direction, destruction of our wildlife and bald eagles.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie Simo.
Jamie Simo, 517 Independence Drive. Mayor Peck and council members, you just voted to table the Distill Toll land swap decision due to ongoing negotiations with Holcomb. Regardless of the direction of those negotiations, nothing coming out of them could justify this proposed land swap. Therefore, instead of merely tabling this decision, you should have outright denied it. At the December 17, 2019 Longmont City Council meeting, council voted unanimously to approve the purchase from and lease back to Holcomb of the Distill and Toll properties. Mayor Peck and council members Hidalgo Ferring and Rodriguez were on the council at the time and voted on that ordinance. Per Longmont's integrated reclamation plan for the St. Frank Creek corridor drafted almost 30 years ago, both Distill and Toll were set to be purchased for open space, but due to the need for a space to store clean field dirt for infrastructure projects, the majority of Toll was instead purchased for use by utilities and public works. At the time of purchase, it was fully understood that Distill would require reclamation before becoming open space, and there was no talk that it would be difficult to restore, as the city now claims. In January 2025, you brought forward the idea of building a Boulder County composting facility on Distill, completely going against the integrated reclamation plan and its updates, which six Longmont mayors, including Mayor Peck, reviewed and supported. The proposal to swap Distill for Toll was then sent to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, PrAB, for a yay or nay as required by the Longmont Municipal Code. PrAB recommended that the swap not go forward. Instead of listening to PrAB, instead of listening to former Longmont mayors, former Longmont city managers, former state senators, former Boulder County open space directors, or even the former Longmont open space director who supervised the purchase of Distill, all of whom have outlined the reservations about the swap, you have repeatedly kicked the can down the road. I and my fellow friends of open space are not obstructionists. We're not nimby's. We're in support of composting, just not on city open space. But let's be clear, this isn't really about composting, is it? Your own staff said that the land swap should be approved regardless of whether a composting facility is built on Distill or not. Boulder County isn't even going to move forward with anything until its compost feasibility study is complete and analyzed. Toll is in the floodway. It's going to be hard to build anything there. That's why Public Works wants Distill. What they want to put there hasn't been determined yet, though. I've said it before and I'll say it again, this land swap is a violation of public trust and sets a bad precedent. At the PrAB meeting last month, city staff admitted that this kind of exchange could and would become more common. I'm not sure how many of the 74% of voters who voted to make our open space sales tax permanent last November would have done so, knowing that the properties that are taxed dollars purchased could be flipped for development. When the land swap comes back before council, I ask that you deny it, once and for all.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
On and off, there we go.
Perfect.
My name is Rob Alexander. I live two miles south of town in unincorporated Boulder County, where I've been, but Longmont's been my town for the last 30 years. I'm here to talk about the Distill property and the potential for it to become a composting processing site. I recently retired from Boulder County Parks and Open Space, where I was a agricultural land and water manager. I was involved in composting efforts since the late 90s. In fact, I was involved in every one to some degree, except for this one. And while we all know that composting would be a good thing and we want it to work, it's very difficult and it has a lot of challenges. And as I read the feasibility study for this project, I see a very big void in dealing with the feasibility, what are you going to do with the product? In this, in the recent feasibility study, they almost don't touch on that. And that is, the end use, the best use for that is on large acres of farmland in Boulder County and close by. You can't get very far away because transportation kills it. And they have not looked at that at all. We have looked at it in the past and it just isn't very feasible. This kind of compost is, has limited benefit for the soil and the crops, and as Phil Hanson, who's a farmer adjacent to this, the property, said, "The benefit just isn't there." There is a large-scale farmer that farms for Boulder County and City of Longmont, who did pretty extensive testing on the ground with compost, and his conclusion is, it just doesn't pencil out. So who's going to pay for the transportation to the farm? Who's going to pay for the spreading? Who is going to pay for the compost itself? If that doesn't pencil out, and all indications are, it doesn't, I don't think, I don't know this for sure, but I suspect the county even can't afford to just provide it free of charge and pay for the hauling and the spreading, that the feasibility is not going to be there. So my concern for Longmont is, what if it doesn't pan out? And I think Longmont needs to look hard at being pretty confident that this project is going to work. There's been a lot that have not been successful. Rainbow nursery is the most recent. What happens if the project doesn't pan out? Does Boulder County maintain a piece of property surrounded by Longmont property that's managed differently? I would suggest Longmont consider a provision that if it doesn't work out, the land goes back to them? Or some provision that considers what I think is a high probability this project isn't feasible.
All good questions.
I have other, I have, I can't see my time, that's...
You got it, you're good.
Okay. I have other concerns. I live nearby, I have concerns for my family, for health concerns. One thing I would like to see, and again, maybe this is for Longmont, maybe not, maybe it's for Boulder County, I have concerns about how is monitoring going to be done for the health concerns of the neighbors? If, if there's a problem, how is it going to be mitigated? I think that those things need to be answered clearly upfront. I think it's just a horrible site to locate a composting facility for wildlife, you know, these large agricultural tracts have incredible wildlife value. They're not looked at that way. They look more at agricultural land values, but they have incredible values, wildlife habitat because of their size and remoteness. That's a terrible place to put a very active site. It's going to impact the activities of the farmers around them, it's going to attract the neighbors, high water tables, flooding, I just think it's a horrible place to sit it. So those are my other concerns. But I think Longmont needs to think about provisions for understanding what's going to happen if it fails.
Thank you for bringing those to us.
Ethan Augreen.
Might I give a handout to council?
Sure. Give him to the city clerk.
This open forum is going to the birds. We've heard about canaries and bald eagles. I'm going to talk about another bird. It's actually a really exciting discovery that was made on the Distill property. I named him Ozzy in honor of Ozzy Osbourne, and because his nest is metal. It's on a utility pole at the Distill Open Space property. And ospreys are a federally protected raptor species under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. That means any individual who disturbs his nest could be prosecuted for committing a crime, but his nest is perched precariously and dangerously atop a wooden electrical utility pole. So the bird could be electrocuted, could start a fire, could endanger workers. In situations like this, Boulder County has a policy of collaborating with Colorado Parks and Wildlife and local utility companies to construct nearby nesting platforms, providing a safer alternative for the birds. However, this nest is not in Boulder County, it's in Weld County. So therefore, the city of Longmont should take the lead by working quickly to install a safe nesting platform 100 to 200 feet away at a more naturally suitable site within Distill Open Space, just south of the current location. Only then will Ozzy osprey and his growing family be truly free to thrive. This will be a... This will be a cost-effective solution and the best practice adopted by many cities across Colorado to help better protect raptors who decide to nest in all locations. Indeed, this was done a number of years ago for the famous ospreys who have resided for many years at Boulder County fairgrounds here in Longmont. And I've also heard that at Twin Peaks Golf Course, a platform was built for the ospreys who reside there. Time is of the essence. Fall migratory season begins in mid to late August. New platform installation must happen within next, within the next two weeks. The sooner new nesting platform gets constructed and the ospreys see it, the more likely they are to voluntarily relocate. I hired city council to quickly approve and fund a new nesting platform installation as soon as possible before Ozzy and his family leave for the season. I believe funding should already be available within existing city programs to fulfill this request, but if that is not the case, I ask council to provide the relatively, relatively small amounts of funds needed to build Osprey's new home. And I want to show you what that could look like. This is a visual demonstration of a new platform that could be situated very close to the existing platform. The ospreys would see it, they would return here in the next spring, and that'd be, it's a great solution for everybody. There'd be less risk to, the ospreys are being electrocuted, less risk of fire. And I'd like to hear your thoughts about this, and if you think this can be done.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I would like to talk with staff to see if this is something that, that can be, that can be accomplished. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. Yeah. Hopefully, the rest of council is on board with that.
Council Yelbo.
I agree. Thanks for bringing this. I know we talked at the farmer's market a little bit about it, and I appreciate you bringing this forth, and that gives us something to look at, and I think it is important as well. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's important that the ospreys not be disturbed before they leave for the winter. And usually, the, the baby birds, the fledglings, will stay after the adults already leave. So you need to be careful about that, about that. The nest, it could be removed from the utility pole if it's confirmed that there's no ospreys there, but you definitely don't want to endanger any eggs or any live birds, because that would be violating federal law. And just a little bit more about how cool ospreys are. When young ospreys like those in Ozzy's nest first spread their wings in late summer, they're not just learning to fly, they are preparing to leave everything they have ever known. Their parents have spent months shielding them from storms, feeding them fish pulled from the water, and ospreys eat almost entirely fish, and guarding their fragile nest high atop a utility pole. And then the parents take flight bound for a warmer climate, leaving their fledglings behind. And the young ospreys wait, they practice flying, they learn to hunt, and then driven not by example, but by instinct alone. Is that my time?
It is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ethan. The next four, I'm going to see if I can pronounce this name, is it Masleys, Lurch, George Avery, Gordon Pedro, and Ed Preston. Prestemon.
You should have said that with your microphone.
Good evening.
Thank you that we can speak here.
Yes, you can.
I'm Ali Slush, from twenty-one oh five Brooks Way here in Longmont. I just wanted to start by saying that I don't feel comfortable at all. I actually get very nervous, so I'm going to force myself to speak slowly. I don't know if I should be afraid of you or anyone, right?
Afraid of us?
That's not, that's not my subject. But, but what also has been very, very dear to my heart, I mean, for over thirty, forty years even, is anything that is toxic in the environment, been very much in holistic health, natural healing, and I know those people who were actually, like RFK, of course, now at least I can say it publicly, people who actually helped others to get healthy naturally, were actually prosecuted, or they had to leave the country, or they were killed. So I knew about it. So I knew all the corruption as far as the FDA and all of that is concerned. I just had no idea that that actually spread throughout, throughout, you know, the whole government. So that has been new. But I would like to know how much jurisdiction you have, because you are obviously at one of the lowest levels, but you are volunteering, so you're not even getting paid, and you have to listen to all these complaints and make very difficult decisions to really accommodate, you know, everyone. And so I'm just wondering, you must have special motivation in order to want to serve in this capacity. I want to applaud you for that, that you want to do that, but you must also somehow get some other benefits from that, right? Because somehow we feel we are not being heard. And how much of a say do you actually have? If we want to keep that open space, we want to live in a safe environment, we don't want those pesticides, a lot of it, all of these poles everywhere with the high frequencies. I'm very, very sensitive too, but I spent a lot of money even thirty, forty years ago. There are wonderful people who also got very sick and had the ability to provide and actually create something, and devices to, to, to protect us. So I bought it worth over four thousand dollars at that time. Now it's cheaper and there are other devices. And I know Do also offers some of those. So I know how to protect myself, my family, but I know that people, and you're, you know, all of the people that live here or anywhere else, they're being, you know, kept in the dark. They are not being educated, they're not being informed, they don't really learn how they can protect themselves, they don't even know, well, you heard that, why they get sick. And I wanted to actually bring something up. Vicky Kertz, who was a, was a good friend because she's no longer alive, but she also spoke here, the beautiful lady, a Waldorf teacher, and she also had students at home. It's for the younger ones. And one day, it was the middle of winter, January, she had a knock on the door and said, "You have to get out, you have to get out, because you have your, your meter is on fire." I said, "What?" "Yes, you have to get out." He said, "I still have children here, I can't just get out that quickly, it's the middle of the winter." Well, because he said, "We never heard of anyone." But this is what happened to her, right here in Longmont, nowhere else, right? And so she said, it took a while, her, her son was home, he was able to help, because one was very small, and said, "For three days, we were not allowed or able to go back into our house." I don't even know, I didn't ask her where she spent it, apparently with friends, because there wasn't a habit of her. After that, of course, she fortunately noticed when they were going to put another smart meter on it, that she had gotten sick from. She's, as I said, she died not too long after that. But, but they were going to put another smart meter on. She said, "No, you can't." He said, "Why can't you?" I said, "It went on, it went on fire, so I don't want to risk that again." She didn't have to explain that she also got sick from it, but she actually had proof of that, right? So we know that that can happen. And no matter what you've been hearing, you, I don't know whether you got the correct information about it, because I know you want to do the, the good things, everything that helps us. But obviously, I don't think you're able to, you must be listening, or maybe you have to also follow some other codes that are required of you. So, is my time over? Because I had no idea how long I'll speak, I just speak from my heart, whatever comes up, but I just wanted to mention that. I just want to live in a safe environment and one where people also feel they have a quality of life. All of these ugly buildings without any, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, any, anything.
Thank you for coming and voicing your concerns. George Avery.
Hello, Mayor Peck, city council members. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak on the distill toll. I just want to remind everybody, I'm a native to Colorado. I lived in this, lived in this house for the last eighteen years, in hopes that the land would be open, open space one day. The major concern is the, the composting plant, the composting plant that's going to be directly right in front of my, out my front door and be able to look at it. I have three little girls, I have a baby, a baby boy that's due any, any day now. The problem is, you've got Boulder Creek, St. Verane, and it's a high water table over there. You dig down ten to twelve feet, and there's other composting facilities that are leaching into these, these water tables that are thirty or forty feet down. We're ten to fifteen, maybe eight feet. And we're talking a major throwaway of Boulder Creek, St. Verane going right into it with the possible contamination. Not only to the smell, also not only down to the property value, that's going to be decreased. The other thing is, we talked about bald eagles, we talked about offspring. I'm lucky enough to come from nothing, be able to create something and have, you know, a property that I have eagles. We do have eagles' nests on, right in front of the distill property, right in front of the toll property. I have offspring nests. It's one of those things that, what are we doing? Are we doing this because Boulder County wants to push it onto Weld County and do, since we can't vote, we're not able to say anything? I've considered myself part of Longmont from the day one since I've been here. My girls go to St. John's, we go to, they're an airborne, everything we do is about Longmont, Longmont citizens, we put our money into Longmont, we put in the, the money into the community. This is not right. My question to you guys is, would, are we doing this because we don't have a say? Are we doing this because it's not in front of your house and it's, it's whatever comes the best for you guys? My fear is, public health, open space, the, all the migratory birds and the birds that are in there, and our health, I mean, the kids' health, and what we're doing, like I said, I'm considered part of Longmont community, even though we're not part of it. And I'm telling you, this is the wrong thing to do. And based off all of the different information and science, it's a money play, it's a money grab. And that's what scares the hell out of me. I mean, if it's money that we need, let's talk about it. You know what I mean? But this deal is a south deal about where actually it's bought and sold, the smell, the toxins that come with it, and it's out front, my front door. You know, I talked to a couple of council members, they're like, "Oh, they can put up a big wall or do something." No, they, I mean, the smell's not going to stop, and, and it's going to go right into our groundwater. My neighbor has a well that's twenty feet deep, he's going to be the first one to get taken out with all the contamination. But we have to understand, are we here? Yes. Does municipal need some other spots and need other locations for the fire facility and the police facility? I'm sure. Let's find something that is workable. When it comes to the composting facility, we're, we're endangering our community, but here, most importantly, you know, Longmont resides in Boulder County, Weld County. And the scariest thing is, we feel like we're getting dumped on, we're getting taken advantage of, because there's no, no say in everything else. And the biggest thing is, health, community health. And open, I mean, this open space, seventy-eight percent of people voted for it to be open space. Yes, toll got deemed in the floodway. I was here part of the floodway. I was pulling people out of the homes during that flood. And the scariest thing is, the contamination is, is probably bad over there right now, which needs a second review. But the other thing is, the leaching into the field, into the water table is going to happen, in Boulder Creek and St. Verane. And maybe you don't care because it's going down the stream, but it's going to affect our, our vegetables, our products, and all the farmers and everything else out there. So I convey to you, please, for the health of my kids, the health of my neighbors, the health of our family, and the citizens that are not really citizens, but the people who love Longmont, that breathe Longmont, give us, give us due process, give us value, give us a thought, but you have to deny this, have to. I get about the fire facility, I get about the, the other facilities, look at a reasonable place to put them, but this did fail at Rainbow. I did an interview for a TV station the other day, and I'm telling you what, a lot more people are against it.
So, Mr. Avery.
Yes.
First of all, we do care.
Thank you.
Don't, don't think that we're doing this because we don't care. The other thing that you mentioned earlier was that there were other compost facilities that were leaching into the, what other compost facilities are you talking about?
I will send you documentation on it. It's pretty noted that there are lots of different composting facilities that do leach into the water table at ten to fifteen feet.
Okay, because I would be very curious as to where those compost facilities are.
I will get you that information.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Gordon Pedro. Whoops, we have councillor, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Councillor Popkin.
Yes.
There we go.
There we go, thank you. Welcome back.
Hey, thank you. Good to see you again.
I know we talked at the end of the meeting a few, about two months ago, and appreciate you sticking around and having the conversation. I just wanted to make a broader comment, somewhat related to what you shared, but also in response to what I've heard from a number of different residents tonight. I was honestly a little bit surprised that there wasn't discussion earlier on the proposal to table this, because it, it makes it seem like there's something happening behind closed doors. And partly, there are legal conversations happening, negotiation conversations happening, and I understand that. I just want to make a broader comment. Everyone is someone who has been on the outside of decision, city decision-making up until January, and now is on the inside of, kind of, the conversation, decision-making too. It's, and I voted for the open space extension on the ballot last year, you know, it seems there's a lot of misunderstanding and unresolved questions, legitimate unresolved questions, and a lack of clear information overall. And, you know, I think that we haven't, I also think we haven't done a great job of clearly defining what net benefit means, when we think about broader space, open space transfers to the community dispositions. There's a process that's legal, that's defined, that's specified, and then there's a process that's both legal and builds trust. And I think that something that we can learn as council and as a city from this is to focus on really both a process that is legal and ensures public trust along the way. And so as this moves forward, that's something that I think we would all benefit from kind of digesting and processing, even as we are following a clear process, and I can, I can personally vouch for saying that this is not a nefarious deal or something that's trying to slip through the cracks in any way, shape, or form, and I mean that sincerely, but I understand why it can be seen that way. And I understand why it can be perceived that way, whether you agree or disagree with where this is going, building that trust along the way is really important. So I appreciate you coming, I appreciate, I think people sometimes think of certain homes or parts of our community as out of sight, out of mind. I also can assure you that's not true in the conversations we're having, but it's really important that you're here, and I really appreciate you speaking up.
No, we appreciate it. And like I said, everything has to go through due process, and we understand due process, but the visibility in this thing is pretty gray. And like I said, Boulder County is, is doing some interesting things in the background with, with news reporters on saying, "Oh, we don't have a comment, but it's on Longmont's table." They're the ones who are pushing for this. And that is open, I mean, that has been said, you know, you can talk to Don from the open, open TV or whatever station he's with.
That's because we are in negotiations, and they don't know what's going on.
Well, hopefully, we vote, no. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Mayor Portim, one more.
One more, sure.
So, sorry, you're not off the hook yet. No, I just, I just wanted to sincerely thank you and other members of the public for bringing, you know, for sharing your lived experiences and impacts to you all. I think, you know, coming into this role, and we heard a resident speak to, you know, "Why do we even do this to begin with?" Well, for me, it was, I felt like I didn't have a voice. So it was bringing that and building those, those connections with community. And then, as I'm in this role, it's like, we're looking at this holistic, you know, as I'm in this role, it's like, we're looking at this holistic, you know, looking at the organization as a whole, and looking at the budget. And, and I think somewhere along the way, if we're not careful, we, we miss those pieces.
Yeah.
So I do appreciate that you've, you've come forward and for all of you that are sharing these, these pieces that we want to make sure we're not overlooking as we, as we make these big macro decisions, and, and know that I do carry them close to my heart.
I appreciate it. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Good luck to us all. Gordon Pedro.
Mayor and City Council members, I'm Gordon Pedro, 2639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. I'm advocating for the preservation of the integrity of our open space program. The revised decision you made earlier tonight tabling the distal toll land exchange does not change the fact that the Public Works Department and the city manager, with the council's complicity, are attempting to convert the distal open space to an intense industrial development. You have twice referred the matter to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, PRAB, and only, and the only board for which you sought advice. PRAB said no to the proposed land exchange. I believe you should listen to the PRAB's advice. I have a fundamental reason that you should remove the distal toll land exchange permanently from the table. If approved, it will violate the public's trust in the city council. In 2000, Longmont voters approved a ballot, referred ballot measure submitted to them by the city council via ordinance 2000-41. If you violate the voter's trust, you start the process of developing a reputation like RTD, RTD has of not keeping your word. Does anyone need to be reminded that it is 2025 and the Northwest Rail to Longmont does not exist, and that Longmont voters distrust RTD? I hope I'm not the only one who recently read section 4.04.130 of the Longmont City Code. Throughout my remarks, while I refer to the city code, it is in reference to this section. This is a code section that codifies ordinance 20-41, the ordinance that placed the open space tax on the ballot, the one voters would have read before casting their vote. This is where voters found the definition of open space. That definition reads, "Open space for the purposes of this section is generally described as those lands in which the city council determines that it is, or may be in the future, in the public interest to acquire an interest, to ensure their protection." The Longmont City Council approved the purchase of the distal property as open space in 2019. Section I of the city code states, "Open space shall serve one or more of the following functions. Number one, preservation of natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, visual corridors. Number two, link and trails, access to public lakes, streams, and other open space lands. Three, conservation of natural resources. Four, district parks. Five, implementing the greenways and open space policies of the comprehensive plan. And number six, urban shaping buffers between and around municipalities. Intense industrial development is not one of the listed items." Section J of the code reads, "Once acquired, open space may be used only for purposes set forth above. Because voters believe, what was in ordinance 2040-41 regarding the definition of open space, purposes of open space, and limitations on future uses, they now expect you to honor Longmont's commitment. A land exchange to convert land purchased as open space to an intense industrial development was not part of the agreement which residents were voting. When questions arise, we all tend to go back to the foundation documents, like we do for the U.S. Constitution. Ordinance 20-41 is a foundational document in this situation. I believe the longer you leave the distal toll land exchange on the table, the more distrust of voters will develop, and the more your reputation for trustworthiness will be in question. Are you willing to put future tax issues in jeopardy when there are alternatives to violating the public trust? Once trust is lost, it's hard to regain. Last November, Longmont voters approved the extension of the open space tax in perpetuity by 74%. I ask you, do you believe residents have more or less trust in the city council since you referred the distal land exchange to PRAB in January?"
Thank you. Is there anyone on council that would like to comment? Well, I do. Counselor Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Thank you, Gordon. I just had a question for you. Could you read the allowable uses one more time?
Preservation of natural areas, wildlife habitat, wetlands, agriculture, and visual corridors. Link and trails, access to public lakes, streams, and other open space lands. Conservation of natural resources. District parks. Implementing greenways and open space policies in the comprehensive plan. And urban shaping buffers between and around municipalities. Intense industrial development was not one of them.
Sure. The current use is a gravel mowing operation, and it was purchased with that. And I'm just curious, like, does, when, from, from your perspective, do you see this, I'm not looking to argue, I'm actually just genuinely curious, do you see that as an allowable use with the open space dollars even though the future plan was to convert it into open space?
I believe that the contract for purchase from the operator was that they had to reclaim it the way they're to reclaim toll and distal.
Correct. That's my understanding as well. And so just the, but the current operation with something purchased?
This gets into what we discussed at our executive session and negotiations. So I, I think we need to cut this one short.
Oh, sorry. I did not think that was getting into that. Okay.
Which is why we tabled it. So the next one is Ed Prestor.
Prestoman.
Prestoman. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Prestoman. I live at 235 High Point Drive in Longmont. I'm a new, new resident to Longmont. My wife Patty and I just moved here from Asheville, North Carolina in May. When we were making a decision about whether or not to move here, we weighed the pros and cons. And some of the big pros included the parks, the greenways, trails, and open space preserved, preserved in and around Longmont. We were aware of all these things before we moved here because we often visited our daughter, son-in-law, and two granddaughters who moved to Longmont over three years ago. They were also some of the pros why we're here. I've been especially impressed by the entire open space program, how the character of the agricultural and natural areas surrounding the city have been protected and preserved, and how wonderful recreational and educational opportunities have been created. I was very glad to see that the open space tax extension was overwhelmingly approved last year. But I'm concerned about this proposed distal toll land swap for a couple of reasons. First, the distal open space parcel was purchased, as people have mentioned, with tax money that was expressly for use to purchase open space. Changing its use without the voters agreeing to it seems to me like a violation of the voter's trust, and also a bad precedent. This action, this action could reduce residents' confidence in and support of the open space program in the future. Second, the new, the new use of the distal parcel is not yet defined, except to say that it is being considered as a composting site. I was an environmental engineer for 40 years, and I watched the video of city and county officials touring composting facilities in South, Southern California last December. I helped design an aerated static pile composting facility for Disney World 20 years ago, and I know that they can be built and operated well. But the impacts of the traffic alone from a composting facility can be substantial, especially if this facility ends up taking waste materials from the entire county. Personally, I'd like to see more definition of the intended use of the distal property and the potential impacts of that use prior to any decision about this proposed land swap. And that, that was my prepared, what was I going to say? But based on, you know, listening to the other speakers tonight on this topic, and knowing what it would realistically take to really evaluate the, you know, the placement of a compost facility, and what the, all of the work that would have to be done just to determine the impacts of such a decision, I just don't think it's a realistic thing to proceed with considering distill as a, as a composting site going forward. And I, as other speakers have said tonight, I would also recommend that the consideration of the distill site as a composting facility be taken off the table. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. Seeing no lights on. The next four are Roger Lang, Alex Bell, Erica Schmidt, and Amanda Harper. Um, I, does anyone else need a break? Okay. Come on down, Roger.
Good evening, Mayor Peck and City Council. My name is Roger Lang. I live at 800 Briarwood Lane, and I'm here to talk about the open space issue. I'll just start with the question, is open space safe in Longmont? And I'll just go ahead and state what I feel. Open space is of high value to the citizens of Longmont, as demonstrated by the passage of ballot issue 3A last year. It extends indefinitely the open space tax paid by Longmont citizens. That demonstrates the importance of open space to Longmont residents. When open space has been acquired in the past, location is a primary consideration. To that point, once a location has been established, it is meant to be permanent and not a future candidate for relocation. My opinion is that any consideration of moving or exchanging open space property is not what the voters of Longmont want. Longmont voters share a belief that existing open space should be left alone and not be a candidate for any future property exchange. I'm one of those voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Alex Bell.
Hello. How's it going? Sorry, I'm like, kind of awkward with public speaking, but I'm going to do my best and just kind of read through what I wrote. Hi, my name is Alex Bell. I grew up here in Longmont. Been here for over 30 years. I put together a plan to revitalize the Longmont Skate Park located behind the rec center on Quail Road. The park was built in 2002 and was influential for my childhood and for all the kids in the community. However, the years, it's slowly been neglected and has become in desperate need of a makeover. I put together a presentation of a plan of action and resources that I've emailed to several city council members, including Parks and Rec. I've had the opportunity to meet with Ben Grattan, a superintendent with Parks and Rec. He has, where did I go? Oh, my gosh. So, sorry, my notes got all messed up. He had agreed that the park was in need of repair and would greatly benefit the community, especially the children nearby. After my meeting, I shared my resources, my contact list, and the proposal from several skate park contractors that I have reached out to, and I have not heard any reply yet. I wanted to come here today to kind of share the current results of the petition that I had put together. We received over 500 signatures in under a month, and a lot of positive feedback from all the members of our, all members of over the community. And yeah, so I have the petition flyer here with me. I'm happy to resend my proposal to anyone who's willing to discuss and how we can help move this project forward.
Can you tell me, tell us one more time where it's located?
It's behind the rec center on Quail Road.
Okay. Thank you. And it looks like Councilman Popkin is up.
Yeah. Hello again, Alex.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met at the coffee with council, and you shared some of the materials there. I think you had a friend there as well who was, right?
Yep.
Cool. We have that. Let's set up some time to follow up on that and make sure that we can figure out what's, what's feasible to do.
Okay.
Awesome. Very great.
Sounds like a great idea. Uh, Councilman Yarborough.
Hi, sorry.
Hi, thanks for being here. Can you also send that information to me? I'm on the website, so that'd be great. Looking forward to seeing that.
Okay, awesome. Can I leave the flyer with you?
Absolutely, yeah. Just like here. Thank you.
Do you have enough for all of us?
I do, actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, great.
Send that out to all of council.
Yeah. And Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Alex, thank you very much. I think you really did yourself a great service by reaching out to the parks folks. I mean, I think that's kind of one of the places it gets started. And we then can kind of see where the ground swell of, of interest is, as well as kind of have, you get some of the firsthand upfront information in regards to what the plan is from the Parks and Open Space and groups, so that they, they can tell you, oh, yeah, that's on the docket for it being, you know, refurbished or whatnot. So I think you approached it the right way, and I just wanted to compliment you.
Oh, thank you.
And maybe others could see the benefit of how you took charge and went after it and contacted city staff and went through the right channels.
Well, thank you. It all started going to the coffee with the council, and I'm happy to continue, you know, doing research, talking to contractors, just kind of getting general ideas of what we could do with the space. I've taken a lot of inspiration from Satellite Skateboards, who started the Green, was it Green, Green Park, Green Block Project, which is off of Valmont. It's a full DIY space with an actual skate park next to it, so just kind of following suit with that.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person that we have on the list is Erica Schmidt.
Hi, everybody. I'm just here with Alex, trying to support him with his project. I want to also thank all of my neighbors and elders here for speaking up on behalf of the open space, trying to protect our wildlife and beautiful green spaces in town. I'm here mostly because there don't seem to be a lot of outdoor spaces for all ages for activities like skating, biking. There's roller skating as well, and kids are on scooters. There's all kinds of things that require a bit of an active space, but the city doesn't really encourage just whipping it out all over different curbs and rails and things like that. It would be really great if they all had a place to go outside instead of being on their phones all the time. Yeah, that's pretty much it. We're working on it. We're working towards gathering the plan. Yeah.
Keep working on it. We like it.
Yeah. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Amanda Harper.
I can sit here.
Absolutely. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm one of the people who lives south of this open space and this proposed compost facility, and it's out on, and I was pleasantly surprised tonight to know how many people who are extremely articulate and knowledgeable brought up a lot of really good points, because I just found out about it this morning and decided to show up and tell some impassioned plea about that neighbor, that area. I don't know if all of you have been there and driven around in there, but it is gorgeous. And Sandstone Park is unbelievable, and it has so much wildlife. And there's a and it has so much wildlife. And there's a, just as an example of how sensitive that place is, they were gonna put a fracking project on the corner of Twenty and a Half that Boulder County fought because of the, whatever that was. And they, they, I would, I went to the Sandstone Park and actually called the Boulder County Commissioners and said, I'm standing here and I can tell you that the impact of a frac project on that corner is like from here to here relatively. It would have impacted that Sandstone Park so much. And there's, there's a, what's the name of it? Some kind of facility, gravel, not gravel, asphalt. There's an asphalt thing directly in Weld County, directly southeast of Sandstone Park. And the smell that comes onto that property, I go there probably three times a month anyway to Sandstone and ride my bike. And it's amazing how sensitive it feels there. Like everything that comes any closer is going to be disastrous. It's the apartments that came right south of the Walmart, and starting from there, going all the way to fifty-two is a paradise, and it shouldn't be ruined with industrial activity. Ag trucks and ag, and you know, some fracking trucks, but ag trucks and farm trucks go slow down that road, and it is a beautiful area. And you go to Sandstone Park and look at Twenty and a Half, it is right there. It would be a light disaster, smell disaster. It would be awful. I have fought frac projects in my life, and I don't wanna pick up another fight in my life, but I might have to if this keeps going. I don't understand why it was tabled and why it's not just denied outright, straight from the front. This is an open space issue. Longmont residents, since I'm in Weld County, I don't have as much say. I'm unincorporated, but I've used Longmont for everything. Like, you know, vitamin cottage, every, everything. I put my tax money into Longmont. And I trust that what I've been hearing these people say is that the trust of the community of Longmont citizens and people like me would be crushed, pretty much, if this thing got approved. First of all, the transfer, but then putting a frac, then putting a horrible, like, compost thing that you guys have, don't know enough about, but some of these people out here did. And so I'm kinda hoping that you'll go back and listen to this whole entire event one more time and get the facts, because these people have facts about composting facility sites. And these people who live there, the Hanson's and the Rasmussen's, I live right in that. That, this is our neighborhood, and it's really, really awful to think about having an industrial site like that. I get the smell, I get the smell from that asphalt every morning. It comes breezing onto my property. It's, it's really a beautiful area. And is it gonna become the Costco-type area again? You know, when, when does it stop? I've been here sixteen years, and I'm just wondering where it's gonna stop. And I think it should stop now with this site, please.
So just, just a comment from me is that we do know about, we do know about composting. This is the third time. It was the A1, first of all, and then the Rainbow Site, and now this one. So I think our council's been well advised.
Okay.
And learned quite a bit.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people here had a lot of good things to say.
I agree. I totally agree.
They, and they, they are good resources. There's good community resources here. If you have their names to get them on board, I think would be great. I'm not one of those people. I'm just the impassioned one that knows nothing except that it's beautiful.
There's nothing wrong with passion.
You know, it's just beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
So, thanks. Thanks a lot for listening and taking.
Of course. All right, the next and last four are Gary Hodges, Strider, Steve Altshuler, and Laura Hinton. Strider, the microphone on that chair works, if you would prefer that. All right, thinking's good.
Hello, Gary Hodges, twenty-one forty-eight Stewart Street, Council Mayor. I'm gonna have some brief comments on the smart meters before I get to my topics. So today I spoke with an engineer that was involved in the development of smart meters. So I was surprised. Turns out the fire issue is real. I'm sure it's rare, but it is real. And tonight I texted my neighbor, who's a battalion chief for Mountain View Fire Department, and he said there have been hundreds of meter fires across the United States. And you can look at the Consumer Product Safety Commission for reports on that. It's not, they're not required for electrification. That's being pushed by some. It's really about reduced billing cost. We've already achieved about a ninety-nine percent savings. Less than one percent of people have chosen to retain their meters. And I've listened to the people many times. I've spoken to them in person, and I just think, you know, it's so much to ask to allow less than one percent of the people to continue to retain their analog meters. Maybe we could grandfather them in if the house is sold, then it has to go, or, and maybe they can text pictures of their meter for billing or something to make it less onerous. Okay, so on to my main topic, which is, a few weeks ago, I spoke how the city's unattainable twenty-thirty carbon-free goal would raise electric rates by more than fifty percent. And I'm sure you guys weren't surprised by that, because you've seen this graph, this graph, if we look at the blue bars, it actually shows twenty-thirty is a little less than fifty percent, but they also did include, include the six-point-eight percent increase in twenty-twenty-four. And looking at the full packet from about three weeks ago, if you look at the projected numbers, it's actually gonna be pushing it close to fifty-five percent in twenty-thirty. And so we could take a pause for a moment and look at the green line, because that's kinda fun. But to make it work, you have to, you have to use some make-believe is required. You see that the magic step in between twenty-twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, and that's when we go to hundred percent or maybe not quite, a hundred percent. Maybe we asymptotically approach it over time, I'm not sure. But we're really not, it's actually, that's all pretend, because we're really not reducing emissions. We're just outsourcing it to China and other countries. And that's what we've done in the United States with steel mills and industry, and then we pat ourselves on the back for being good, such good environmentalists by outsourcing our problems to other people. But let's not lose sight of an important point, and that is, since the goal cannot be attained, it means that we might, we might pursue it without end, requiring ever-increasing electric rates. And so we can see that that, their projection shows it increasing in time, even with their CO2 output is flat. Slide two. So if the average Longmont electric bill is twelve-hundred dollars a year, put in an open records request. I wanted to have the exact numbers, but I estimated it as a hundred, just for this discussion. Fifty percent increase, and so in twenty-thirty will be, take it to eighteen-hundred dollars a year, so that's an increase of six-hundred dollars a year. And the median home household income, if I project that to twenty-thirty, will be about one-hundred thousand dollars. So that equates to about a point-six percent reduction in median household income. And if we, if we extrapolate that or extend it out to all of the city, that's about twenty million dollars a year for the city. That's using about thirty-three thousand customers, another question I asked in the open records. That's twenty, excuse me, twenty million dollars a year that's never coming back. It's evaporated. It's not gonna be spent at the pump house. It's not gonna be spent at Main Street boutiques or local coffee houses. This money is carved out of the local economy and is never coming back. Keep in mind, the actual losses to the local economy have actually already started with our rate increases, and it's only gonna increase with time as long as we pursue the unattainable goal, unattainable goals. And again, as I stated earlier, it's not gonna stop at fifty percent, because the goal cannot be met. And so it will eventually be a hundred percent increase or more, and maybe as much as two-hundred percent, which is what we see around the world with all countries, states, cities that have done this. Here's some numbers here. About thirty-eight billion tons of CO2 are released globally. About five billion tons are for the US emissions. We're about thirteen, the United States is about thirteen percent of the global, shifting from billion to million. Eighty-six million tons in Colorado, that's about one-point-seven percent of the US. And in Longmont, we do about one-point-five, which is about one-point-seven percent of Colorado. And then electric is responsible for about twenty percent of CO2 emissions, and that, so that equates to about three-hundred thousand tons from electricity. So the red portions are really what's important here. So if we are able to reduce it, which of course we're not, because we outsource, et cetera, but that amounts to, Longmont about point-three percent of Colorado, about six thousandths of a percent of the US, or about eight, ten thousandths of a percent of global. God, grief, where does my fire come from? Let's go. I had such good things to say.
You've got so much in though.
Yeah. So how much are we willing to pay for effectively nothing? Twenty million? Forty million? Eighty million? I mean, that's really where we're at. So in practice, this is not doing anything, and we're spending a lot. If we do nothing, it'll be injecting twenty million into the economy.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Strider. Oh, somebody, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Popkin. I know.
Gary, you can stick around for a second.
Hey, wonderful. I love being up here.
We don't always get to have a conversation on this topic.
Yeah, I know. We got to, because I know you disagree with me on a lot, and I would love to sit down and explain to you a lot of this.
Yeah, we'll sit down. We can do it right now for the next two hours.
If everybody's willing, I'm willing.
Just kidding. We can, we can certainly talk another time. So just, just wanted to note a couple of things. One, for clarification, just for, for public awareness in general, the, the comment that you made about the PRPA goal in terms of the one-hundred percent, just to let you know where their latest plan stands and for the public's awareness. So if I recall correctly, from the twenty-twenty-four Integrated Resource Plan, their approach, the plan, the current selected scenario and the infrastructure investments related to that are planning to get probably eighty-two to eighty-five percent renewable by that point. And there are real benefits from a flexibility of grid management standpoint at that point. There's cleaner air, there's greater fixed costs to plan for, and more predictability in cost plan, and less volatility from fuels. You talk about outsourcing kind of the, the investment, the money that we're spending on our bills, when actually, in this direction, we're actually investing more in our local infrastructure.
It's actually outsourcing our pollution, is what I'm talking about.
Well.
Outsourcing the CO2 emissions, because it's all about the inescapable truths of mining and refining. Because that's, that's why wind and solar really don't reduce CO2. They just, they just emit it in other places.
So I understand, I understand there are materials involved, and most of, many of those are mined in terms of the minerals that go into these products. But the, from an outsourcing pollution standpoint, that's not quite, I mean, we might have to talk about this offline there, because that's not a quite one-to-one here. And so when we're thinking about actually creating a cleaner air, we're not outsourcing that pollution.
Cleaner air is true locally, but it makes it dirty somewhere else.
No, we're mining.
It really does, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll have lunch on that one.
You gotta move a lot of rock to make a pound of copper.
You have to move a lot of rock to make a lot of what we have in society. And so you're outsourcing, you're not outsourcing that, and you're actually investing the dollars in our local infrastructure, rather than paying for fuels that actually are outsourcing to other places. When we talk about liquid fuels or coal that we're buying from other areas, some of that's domestic, some of that's not. So I just wanted to kinda reinforce that piece of it. The overall net benefits from an infrastructure standpoint, though, are more local control over that, actually. And that's what we're actually striving for. And so it's cleaner, it's healthier, it's safer. It's also more within our power to manage. And that's something that's actually a real benefit as we get there, and it reduces cost volatility over time. And with any infrastructure, there's an investment that goes into that, but at the same time, we are thinking about the volatility of that. And I hope that we can maybe build on that conversation going forward.
Right. So how much are we willing to pay for all of that? That's really the question I wanted to get to. That would have been my take-home slide.
How much are we willing to pay for that?
Yeah, for essentially no CO2 reduction, to just do the things you wanna do. So it's twenty million a year in twenty-thirty. If it goes to a hundred percent, it'll be forty million a year. And that's forever.
So.
That's never coming back to the economy. I mean, five years, twenty, that's a hundred million dollars a year taken out of our local economy.
Actually, that's, that's not how the billing process works, when you.
Well, maybe because we tax electric rates, so maybe to the city, it doesn't matter, but to the people who live here, it does.
Sure.
And to the individual businesses, it does.
So.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, this is really interesting, but I like the idea that you should sit down at coffee and go over all this.
We should, we should get down to two chairs and invite, and then maybe people would pay to come see it, but I would do that.
Ah, that is yours.
That keeps the money here. Now we're talking. Here's the thing. When we're paying our electric bill, that's going to the city to invest in our infrastructure. That creates jobs that are building that infrastructure that keeps the dollars here, actually. And so we should continue this conversation, because I think what we're actually doing is what you want.
Well, replacing a perfectly functioning system.
I think Red Frog would be a good place for the two of you to go.
Perfectly functioning is.
We are.
Is a very different.
You can look at the.
We simply don't have that.
After Rawhide was built, there was only about a point-one percent fluctuation in rates for something like fifteen years.
We have, we have three other people who would like to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Strider, hello. Turn on your microphone.
Thank you. Hey, it works. Yeah. Man, I didn't know it was gonna be almost one topic all night. And I agree with about ninety-five percent of what I've heard, including some I'm learning from Gary. I need to study that more. But, all right, fire, flood, fear, flee. The, what we're dealing with is a world going up in flames, and we're burning our resources and putting it into the air. And Greta Thunberg, Thunberg's book, Climate Catastrophe, that's not the name of it, but she's got more than a hundred F essays of people all around the world who give their insights into this. And somebody called the Orange Mussolini, who gave our country over to the South African immigrant called Elon something, and he took a chainsaw to the Constitution, and they're actively destroying our entire concept of a constitution and democracy and how to have a meeting like we're having here tonight. And on the, on the, the climate side, the energy side, Saudi Arabia is now building all kinds of wind farms and solar farms, much more than, and here, our previous administration got us back up into the, you know, into the pack of the world leaders who were beginning to really address our climate catastrophe. But China is now the leading country in the world in terms of building, of building of infrastructure and of other forms of energy production. And so the United States had gotten up among the world's leaders the last three or four years, and now we're heading right down to the bottom, because everything has to be for the profits of the oil companies. Thomas Jefferson, when he wrote the Declaration of Independence, learned a lot from John Locke. But John Locke said, "Life, liberty, and property." Thomas Jefferson changed that to "life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Well, John Locke grew up during the, the end of the Thirty Years' War, the religious wars in Europe that killed half of the population of Central Europe. And so, you know, we got the Bill of Rights, freedom of speech, press, religion, and assembly, and protest. And now we have an administration of regime that's abolishing education, abolishing history, burning books. And it was a German that once said, a German poet said, "Once you start burning books, then you're gonna burn people." And it only took him about a hundred years after he said that, before they started burning people by the millions. people by the millions. And I'm going to give a talk on the creation of the Constitution, which will include, it's called the Second Founding, how difficult it was not only to create the Constitution, it took nine years. We didn't have a country for eight years after we won the war before we had a country in 1789. But the Second Founding, it was a similar struggle about the Civil War and Reconstruction and the 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments that took about six or eight years to finally get it before Jim Crow destroyed it all. And it was our civil rights movement 60 years ago that we got democracy back into our country and began to live up to our ideals and the Constitution. And we, if we don't have a founding document, we don't have a country. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. We do have Matthew Popkins, Councilor Popkin.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. You know, you're, there's actually a synergy between the last two speakers, between you and Gary. And I just wanted to, you spoke more about thinking globally and acting locally.
Yeah.
And acting within our control. And Gary before was actually kind of making the point that acting locally is very, a very small portion, a very, very small portion of the broader emissions and air quality that we're dealing with. And I guess I have a question for you, just one. You know, to be fair to Gary, Gary's point, he's not wrong. We're a very small percentage of the global climate in terms of our emissions. And so my question for you is, how do we eat an elephant?
How do we what?
How do we eat an elephant?
Get an elephant.
How do we eat an elephant?
Eating an elephant? Well, you know, part, yeah, yeah. One, I mean, Chicago, you used to not be able to see the sky, but there were beautiful sunsets. And then they exported all the steel mills. Bob Dylan wrote a song about that. And so, yeah, we exported our pollution, but we're still creating the climate catastrophe that's 1,000 times worse now than it was 60 years ago. And we have to learn from each other because we have different backgrounds. One thing about history, if you don't know where you're coming from, you don't know where you're going. So we need that kind of understanding. And I learned from Gary too, although I disagree with a lot of points. But there's aspects that he's talking about that I have very little knowledge of and I'm trying to get that into the balance.
That was a little longer answer than I was expecting, but I think we, I think we got the point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Strider.
Hello.
Laura.
I'm Laura.
Laura, one moment, please. Steve Altshuler was next.
Oh, you were next. I'm sorry.
You can go if you'd like.
Odds and evens?
Rock, paper, scissors? Go ahead.
Thank you, Steve. Hi, Laura.
I came late to the game of.
Can you pull that microphone down close to you?
There you go. How's that? I'm usually too loud. But I just came here to ask a simple question. Why the swap? Why did they want to swap the lands?
Well, when we're all done with negotiations, we'll let you know.
And I come from Chicago. We have a beautiful lakefront. And no one touches it. And that's why I loved Longmont. You, I'm sorry, I do this all the time and it pisses me off that I can't talk without this. And I'll take a deep breath. We have a beautiful lakefront. And we have fought for years till old daily finally laid it at rest. The lakefront is not for sale. It's not for development. It's not to be touched. And maybe we should take that advice and you disregard the swap out of hand. I have looked and looked and I cannot find anything that there's been any environmental study and or that lifestyle impact, anything about putting, and I know it has to go someplace and no one wants it in their backyard. And what the hell are we going to do with all the waste? You know, we, those are questions that, and as I was sitting here and they brought up about the eagles, it reminded me of my sister who lives at, on the Mississippi River at the confluence of two rivers. And they have a beautiful Palisade Park, which is geographically and just a wonderful place. 20 years ago, their eagles started dying. And the eggs were infertile. And what had happened across the river in Iowa, they had a landfill, which I know is different than compost. But the eagles changed from being birds of prey to being scavengers. And the difference in diet was killing them off. So that's another thing that is not in the equation. But I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think this is the answer. And I really believe you should not table this, but if you can, reject it out of hand.
Good comments.
Because you do, I know from being at the, I don't know what the word is. Hell, my old brain is so damn old.
Laura, you're doing fine. Sit up there and tell us off.
I have the advantage of the foresight of the founders of Chicago, that they have, we have parks scattered throughout, throughout the city. Our lakefront is an international jewel. And we in Longmont have the ability to do that. We have the ability to have for generations to come. And when he was talking about what projecting about the electricity, what the hell? We don't know what, I'm sorry, I'm swearing. This is from Trump. I started swearing when he was reelected. But anyhow, we have the ability now to give our progeny, is that the right word?
Progeny.
Progeny, a gift. And if we, I have the idea if we start chipping away at it now. And why, why is the swap? Does anyone know why they want to swap the two lands? Anyone?
Again.
Well, when, when something, Chicago is a corrupt city. And so whenever anything, for all the good we've done, it's just hard to manage. But for all the good we've done, I, we, when it's, when anything, I learned from being in Chicago politics, that when anything is not crystal clear, there's some dirty stuff going on.
Well, there's no dirty stuff going on here.
I doubt that, Joan. I doubt that. I would not think you or anyone on the board, because you are volunteers. You get paid a pittance and you do a hell of a lot of work. And I admire you all.
So just let me, let me, let me put something clear to everybody. We had a large contingency of residents saying they want a composting center. So it isn't something that we, as a council, just thought, oh, that's a good idea.
No, no.
It came to us.
Please, I didn't, I, I didn't mean to infer that at all. But.
But my point is, when you say there's something going on, or anyone says there's something nefarious, there's nothing nefarious.
But then why isn't it crystal clear why they want to make a swap?
Because there are legal negotiations going on and we are, we are under attorney-client privilege.
We're not an attorney.
No, but our city, city attorney is an attorney.
See, that bothers me right there.
Well, thank you so much, Laura. And I am so glad that you commented and came tonight.
And think about the eagles.
Oh, we do.
Yep, because that's an unintended consequence.
Okay.
That we could lose them to poisons in the compost.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Popkin.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to.
Laura.
Laura, just briefly wanted to add on to what Mayor Peck was saying before. The reasons, there are legal discussions we can't talk about right here, but the reasons for why this was proposed were publicized in multiple meetings with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, with multiple city council meetings. People might reasonably disagree about whether those reasons are valid, but the reasons that the city council and staff were considering that or weighing whether this was a good option were publicized. So just to be completely clear there, that. The reasons that were discussed in multiple packets and presentations at multiple advisory board meetings and city council meetings were looking at the net benefit to open space and whether there was a quality or quantity benefit or both that were proposed there. Again, reasonable people can disagree there, but there were, there was a legitimate proposal to think about the quality of a gravel mining operation. A woman spoke before about the asphalt plant that she can smell. That is the distal site. Just to be clear, that is the distal site. Now, you might. Open space?
Yes.
That was purchased with Open Space Funds, I believe, in 2019. That's a great question. There's a long history there. But just to be clear, that gravel mine operation site is the distal site. It is owned by Open Space Funds. And the goal was to reclaim that longer term to become open space, from what I understand. And so the proposed swap, the intention of that, again, whether you disagree or not and whether.
That's where I came to find out.
Yeah, great. And so the intention was to swap the sites from what is currently an active gravel and asphalt operation, which is currently an industrial site. If you go and look, you can drive by, like, it is plain sight, like.
But I have them reversed.
Right. So, and I can wrap this up super quickly. So, yeah, I think a lot of people had it reversed. And again, whether you agree, I think, I've already spoken tonight about the process and the fact that we haven't built trust in this process and that there can be significant negative consequences to this too. But the distal site is a current active asphalt facility and gravel, gravel operation. And the Tull site is the one that looks like a bunch of hills of grass and weeds and shrubs, and it's right next to the water. Just to be clear what we're talking about, there are legitimate reasons why people are concerned about this proposal. And I understand and met with many people there. And I just want to note that that, that is, those are the two sites we're talking about and those are the current conditions of those sites.
Why didn't you tell me that at 7 o'clock? I wasn't.
Well, I'm sorry that didn't get conveyed to you sooner, truly, because you could have enjoyed your evening in a different way.
And just David Bell from our Parks and Recreation is happy to have a tour, to take people out, to show you the sites, because a visual makes all the difference in the world. So if you're interested in going out to see what we're talking about, we'd be happy to.
I would love that.
Well, I'll take you out there. Let's go to lunch.
Great, I'll even buy you lunch.
I spoke first.
I, when I drove out there and I saw the two sites, I just knew that the other site was open spaces.
No. So let's, let's make a date to do that. I'll take you out there and show it to you. And.
Thank you very much.
Then you'll know.
And thank you very much, Randy.
Steve Altshuler. Just a moment, please. I know, we're good. Steve, you're up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve. See, if you would have known I was going to talk that long, I would have been.
Good evening. Steve Altshuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. I moved to Gondole 30 years ago from Southern California. Every week I'd go to Chautauqua and run the Mesa Trail. I volunteered as a trail guide at the stables in Eldorado Springs on the weekends for fun, usually stopping at Pearl Street for dinner or shopping on my way home. All that stopped when the city decided to take away most of the free parking in Boulder. Now I go to downtown Boulder only about one or two times a year. It's a net loss for Boulder tax revenue and local businesses. 18 years ago, my family and I moved to Longmont. We loved the open space, lack of traffic jams, and shops, and shopped at the original Twin Peaks Mall. Now the only things at the mall are a movie theater and chain restaurants. Along Kaufman Street, over 100 parking spaces have been removed, and I'm willing to bet that parking meters on Kaufman and Main are soon to follow. This will only drive customers away from downtown. In 2022, this Longmont Council had a survey done, asking what people did or did not like about Longmont. The top three dislikes were traffic, crime, and homelessness. Housing was about number eight. Yet for the past three years, all city council has done is build, 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 especially low-income housing. We already have several hundred vacancies with thousands more about to be built. Even if they were all filled, all this would do is add to the traffic and crime and do nothing for homelessness. When will you start to listen to the citizens of Longmont, the people that you are supposed to work for? Last year, a very corrupt event happened, in my opinion. Marcia Martin was in violation of council requirements and was told that she had to step down. With 18 months before the next election, according to the Longmont bylaws, a midterm election was required. Instead, five of the six remaining council members voted to have her stay until December, thereby being less than one year before the next election and allowing the council to appoint a successor of their choice instead of the people choosing. Personally, I think every member that voted to extend Marcia's time should resign. A couple council members said they needed Marcia here to help with the budget due to her experience, due to her experience. Let's talk budgets. From 2018 to 2024, Longmont population went up 1.5%, yet the budget went up 22%. That is not the worst part. In 2025, the budget was about 460 million, but you're already well over budget. In fact, looking at spending almost $1 billion. So my question is, why bother ever even doing a budget? It has been this way almost every year. If any business was run like this, they'd be bankrupt in a year. Where does all the extra money come from? Aaron Rodriguez wants to do away with 33-foot height restrictions and maybe build seven-story buildings so the builders can make more money. This is not why people live in Longmont, but the council has their own dreams of making Longmont a 15-minute city. Mayor Peck wants to do away with natural gas and have everyone pay 400 to 600 a month more on utilities. Of course, if someone cannot afford, they can always move into city councils, low-income housing. We all know about the way smart meters were forced down our throats. By the way, if there are no more meter readers and no more cars to drive around in, where did all the tax savings go? 350 some-odd homes are paying $15 a month to not have a smart meter, and that might go up. This is purely a punishment for not blindly doing as one is told. For these and other reasons, I bring common sense, real budgeting abilities, and a desire to truly represent the people of Longmont and not rule over them, I am hereby announcing my candidacy for Longmont City Council at large. Thank you. Unless anyone has a comment. Yes, sir.
Well, I just think that this is an open forum to talk about the issues of Longmont, not for you to grandstand and.
I am talking about if you live in Longmont.
Yeah, you are just to grandstand, though. And that's usually your way of doing it. And so.
Now you're getting personal.
If you don't fight to get the facts right. So I'm just saying.
He has the right to speak as well.
So I just know that that's how you have done it every time you announce. You always come in here and it's a drop-the-mic moment. You almost ran back up to your seat there because you wanted to have that drop-the-mic moment. So I'm calling you out on it, Steve.
Okay.
I think it's.
If I wasn't running back to my seat, I was gone.
That's the typical Steve we all know. And I've run. And I've run against you, and that's how you do it. You always do the drop-the-mic.
And you always have a.
You always have a, a not-so-quite-accurate.
Thank you.
So where am I wrong?
Thank you.
I'm not going to discuss it right here.
Yeah, because I'm not wrong.
Counselor, Counselor Popkin.
Don't run away yet.
Oh, I'll, I'll come back.
I, I want to talk about an issue. You mentioned one of the concerns being homelessness.
Yes.
Do you know what one of the solutions to homelessness is?
Sounds like a loaded question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm opening the door to answer it however you want.
What do you think the solutions to homelessness are?
One of the solutions is to have more housing that's a, a transitional income level that allows for people to move between that. That doesn't solve all of homelessness. The homeless population is very complex and is dealing with a lot of different issues. But that is one of the solutions. So when you come to have more, a greater and more flexible housing supply and different options for where people can live, that is one of the solutions. And it would be hard to dispute that.
Are there fewer homeless people now than there were four or five years ago?
I would have to look at the data on that.
Okay. And how much rent do you think a homeless person could afford?
Well, that's why we run a housing authority and we manage a range of different housing products for people at different levels. And also, what I, the, the main point here is that the homeless population is not a monolith. And so they're coming in at different points, they're slipping into houselessness and homelessness at different points as well. The key noun in the word homeless is home. And so when we're focusing on how do we make people afford to live here, that is one of the solutions. And there are definitely other strategies that are needed and that we do do actively to manage our homeless population, but housing is a piece of that. So we, we, we need to connect the dots.
And so is jobs, and so is education, and all kinds of things.
But don't bemoan our focus on housing.
Don't what?
Don't bemoan our focus on housing.
There's a lot of things to focus on, as I mentioned. I guess I didn't sit down now.
And our next person?
Do you want to come on now? Apologize for being late. It seems to be a day of mishaps.
No problem.
Even on the way over here, Uber managed to hit the curb really hard.
Um, can you, you may sit in that chair and use that microphone if you prefer.
Here?
Sure.
Okay, okay. Might be better.
And make sure the microphone's turned on. There you go.
There we go. Okay. Thanks for, for letting me talk, because I wasn't here earlier. I just had some concerns about a city hearing that I did regarding our favorite topic here.
Can we have your name, please?
My name is Rosanna Jenny.
Thank you.
I live at 122 Fort Bennett Street.
Okay.
So, um, some things were a little bit left in the air, but one thing I was gonna, a couple of things I wanted to ask is that, basically, the decision was not in my favor. I was hoping to opt out completely. I had an attorney representing me, and it was just for the hearing. But primarily, I'm just wondering if I can have more time to prepare. I'm concerned about having my power shut off. The other concern is that, you know, the meter could just be put on, and there was some discussion. This, to me, would be sort of the worst case or the medium best-case scenario is to not have the meter directly on the home. So there was some discussion of that, but it didn't appear in the final determination.
Okay.
So that's a concern. But I did, I, my attorney, um, let's see. To make a long story short, I, some documents were not introduced in the hearing that I would have liked to introduce. Basically, what I was trying to show, using, um, you know, kind of like legitimate credible sources, was that the opt-out meter wouldn't resolve my issue. And the, the hearing examiner, Mr. Luther, said in the report something about, that I stated that I didn't use a pacemaker. And I was a little concerned, confused by that, because what I had been talking about was that I was concerned about visitors to my home that do have pacemakers or other implantable devices. And so I bought, I brought relevant documents about electromagnetic interference with those devices, and including, you know, a Yale, a handout from Yale Medicine that basically says, you know, avoid radio transmitters, which is what a smart meter is. Even if it's turned off, it still emits RF, even if it's a non-transmitting meter. So I, you know, I do have concerns and I'm afraid of running into huge expenses in a summer where I need to replace my roof and other things need to happen. So I do wish that, you know, that there could be an opt-out for individuals that have medical issues, because mine specifically is that I do have a CPAP machine. And I didn't bring this up in the hearing, because we kind of had a lot of topics to cover. But, um, once, when I fell behind in my bills with the city, my power was shut off and that was on me, but nevertheless, I started to suffocate with the mask on. And so then what happened is, I, I didn't know this happened to you when you started to suffocate, but I started to vomit in my sleep. So, you know, I had to call an ambulance and go to the hospital and go to the ER. And they were able to bring me back, but I was surprised how long I was choking and choking and choking and couldn't breathe. And so one of the pieces of evidence I brought up, and sorry to, you know, say something that's sort of graphic and unpleasant, but that's really what happened. I believe it was maybe sometime between August and October of 2016, I'm not sure. But, um, but in any case, one thing that can happen when people have smart meters, and I, I brought a copy of expert testimony in another court case, is that there is a higher likelihood of appliance failure. It's just been noted in, in numerous reports. And this was a report by one expert witness who was very familiar with the system, who had worked with it himself, specifically the AMI meters. But there can be a problem with sensitive medical equipment, and it's expensive, it's hard to replace, but it's also life-staining, sustaining equipment in some cases, like it could be oxygen or something. And so I feel quite strongly that we do really need an opt-out that is to the analog, because that's what, that's what that expert recommended. Sorry. So, so I hope you'll consider that for cases that, for certain medical issues that folks do have. And I was going to ask for more time, because I did have health issues and I, I don't know how long I have to, um, to respond to the result of the hearing, or I'm just worried my power's going to be shut off and/or, you know, I don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
And I, my house is accessible, I don't have anywhere to go that's like an accessible dwelling. You know, it's all set up for my issues, so.
I'm, hold on, I'm just looking at a, looking up a, an email that we got, and for some Yeah, you are on the list for it being shut off, so we need to speak to, um.
Check your email.
An email from.
I'm sorry.
What?
Okay, they said that they, we just got an email saying they were delaying tomorrow's actions for, for shutting off. But I do have a question. You said you were denied the opt-out?
The opt-out that they offer, you know, is the one that is in the bill. I testified down at the Colorado General Assembly. I think it's 251175. So I'm familiar with that bill, and I admire the efforts that were made by Junie Joseph and Sheila Leader. And I forgot the name of the other person, I'm sorry, I can't remember. But I know that Sheila, I, I have personal awareness just from hearing it, I don't know her personally, but I believe she was having, to the best of my knowledge, she was having problems with her meter. But what I have tried to show with my, my documents is that, which I wasn't able to introduce in my hearing, is that it doesn't really resolve the problem for some of us. So, you know, it's, it's important to address that, that gap.
Okay, I personally have not read that bill, so I will, and all of these comments will go back to our LPC. And hopefully, I, I want to hear more about the hearing. I haven't heard anything from LPC about the hearing. So thank you for bringing these items up to our attention. And you do have doctors, your own personal doctor's.
Yes.
Documentation.
I have, I don't know if you'd need that from me now.
No, I don't need it.
She wrote another one. She's just really concerned about the power being cut off, because frankly, even if I went to a friend's house, I couldn't function there.
Okay.
You know, like, for example, a carpet, I usually use the chair at home, and I can't roll it on the carpet. There's just out in stairs, you know, it's, I can do a little bit here and there, but I can't live that way all the time.
Okay.
And of course, it's not an option to live at somebody, just crash at somebody's house.
You have your own home, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for bringing these issues to us.
Who, who might I hear from? Because I'm just kind of like worried that something will happen, like, you know, I'm on the edge of my seat a little bit.
Um, I do not have, but I will walk it over to you to get your email address.
Okay. Do you want me to just come over and give it to you?
Um, yeah, would you, she's the last one on the list.
Should I approach or?
No. Mayor Potem Hidagoferring is bringing it to you.
And I am having some trouble with my internet, but I believe I'll get your thing, if not on the computer or on the phone, so. One question I do have is if I could have longer time to, you know, do a response to the hearing? My doctor wrote a letter about that.
Let me, we need to work with LPC in the hearing.
Okay, okay.
So I can't answer that, and I don't think anyone here can answer that either.
Okay, so where should I put it? Just next to here? What? Okay.
I know.
That's where they've got my name.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just on the next line.
Okay.
Sorry. Seeing no one else, either on the list or in the public, that wants to talk to us during this open forum, Laura?
I, before I leave, I want to compliment the council and the planning. I was on Kaufman, right, should we be on?
We can't hear you. You need to be on a microphone.
Okay, I will stand up and I will talk my big girl voice.
Um, Laura, we're, we are not going to do this. We need, we need somebody on the microphone, and we're not having people come up a second time. Okay, so, but. No, it's okay. We're not going to continually discuss, but thank you anyway. But anyway, we screamed at. So I want to thank everybody. All of your comments were great. We've learned something, I hope you have. And you can talk to us anytime, especially in these open forums. Thank you. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Well, not according to.
Not on her paper.
No.
Oh, wait, on the backside? It's on the backside.
We are now at mayor council comments. All right, Counselor Crist.
I do want to thank everyone that spent their evening with us tonight and bringing your concerns here. And just to reiterate, the conversation on the backside here is that there's a pause in terms of any kind of electrical discontinuation. So just to confirm, there's a pause on any kind of power disconnection. Yeah, okay. So thank you for sharing your concerns, and we'll have a lot of conversations about what we learned. And especially, I'm concerned about illnesses within the home and how maybe we, we might consider, I'm just going to throw this out there, might consider some kind of medical variance as a council in regards to issues with illnesses within the home. All right, thank you again, and I will pass the microphone to anyone else who has a comment.
City manager's report? Nada. City attorney, nada.
I move adjourned.
Second.
Has been moved by Counselor McCoy, seconded by a couple of other counselors. That we adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.